Good evening, everyone. I'll call to order this special work session for December 6, 2022. As this being a work session, we'll just jump straight into the meeting after our call to order and the Pledge of Allegiance. And then we'll go right into our first presentations. Before, after we do our roll call, though, there'll be an opportunity if we just want to line up and grab some food for everyone in the audience and the board, and then we can have our first presentation. So let's start off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Trustee Hardy.
Yes.
Trustee Ayers.
Here.
Trustee Sorcelli.
Here.
Trustee Butler.
Here.
Mayor Potem Grace.
Here.
Mayor Caraspe.
Here.
Trustee Murphy will be absent this evening.
Right, thank you very much. Okay, our next is Landscape Guidelines, and will be our first presentation. But again, before that, if we just want to line up and grab some food here and a drink, and then we can just eat that while the presentation goes on, does that sound all right? Okay, great, thanks. Let's have at it. Would you mind raising your hand? All right, I'm grouped there. Thank you for coming out tonight. I think just because we've got new faces on the board, and if we could just briefly introduce yourselves and say your name, could we just start in front left, or on your front right? Yeah, thank you.
My name is Brett Lee. I moved to Berthitt, left Colorado about three years ago. I'm from Live School, CU, and it's incredible to be back, great town.
Great, thanks Brett.
Dan Dowker, planning commission, former Conover member. We work with the National Council on Parks and Recreation. And we've done a few things with the community.
Thank you.
Hi, Karen Anderson, I still have a planning commission. We haven't been here quite two years yet. Really loving living in Berthitt and wanted to thank those who come to the town today. And I'm very happy about the power, so well, we are being able to guide her through the stuff.
Chris Fertz, I've been with the planning commission for about two years, and for that I was on a full community. You know, you've actually obviously been a community member, and so really love the town, and it's like this profession I've worked at fully in order to have a leadership here.
All right.
I'm Abby Smith, I've joined the planning commission for about two years. We have been based since the beginning as well, and I'm a private client in Boulder.
All right, thank you.
Melissa Fulpus, New Charles, we know again.
All right, thank you very much. We only had this one other time where we had the planning and zoning coming. I'm just really thankful that staff thought to invite you guys again, because we're all seeing the same stuff, so.
Yeah.
If you guys have input anytime, I know you guys are going to see it on your own as well, but if you just want to come to front and ask questions when we open it up, I think it'd be great. Cool, all right, we're ready to roll. Administrator, Clerk, do you want to introduce?
Yeah, so thank you trustees, planning commission, everybody for being here. We have a handful of items for you tonight. The intent of our work session is to get some of these in front of you, just to be able to both kind of bring you up to speed on the work that's been done, some of these you've seen before, to get your feedback, make sure we're still going in the right direction. And so we're going to start with the landscape guidelines, which you have not seen before. This is a draft that we've been working on with Erin Bagnall from Sofa Spawn Architects and the team that she's been working with in the planning department. So she'll walk you through that and happy to answer some questions that you have. You may or may not remember, but Sofa Spawn and Erin did our architecture guidelines as well, and so these will follow a similar format and style. We'll just kind of let her go through it and take questions as appropriate. Erin, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Chris. My name's Erin Bagnall, as Chris has said, and we did do the architecture guidelines, so they will follow a similar format. That was sort of my introduction as well. Thanks, Chris. This is a draft view, and I'm hoping that everyone has at least had a chance to review a PDF of the landscape document. Okay.
Staff send it through to the board.
Okay, that's great. That's good. It's very similar to what we're trying to accomplish with the architectural guidelines, which is serve as an addenda to the comp plan and the municipal plan, and really just respond to the fact that, as you all know, Berthitt is experiencing a lot of growth, and creating a document that can be a design outline, that can be used as a reference for staff and developers and property owners to just produce the vision of the garden spot of Colorado that everyone knows and loves about the town of Berthitt. What we think is really important is just allowing flexibility within the plan. In addition, and we did the same thing with the design guidelines for the architecture, it's important to establish the goals and allow for design intent to be flexible. So I'm going to roll through kind of how the document is outlined, if I can do this.
Erin, did you plug the dongle or change?
You know what, I didn't.
You could alternatively use the arrow keys if you wish.
I could do that. And we'll see if this works, and otherwise I'll use the arrow keys.
Try passing the cleaner, please.
That's the dongle. Okay, apologies. We'll see if this works now. Sorry, apologize. Pause for IT help.
No worries.
On there.
You know, I had a good joke, or?
How's the pizza?
It's good.
Yeah?
Yeah, Berthitt pizza. Good choice.
It just changed on our screen, Christian.
Did it change on yours?
Mm-hmm. It went back.
Is it just really slow?
Interesting.
Is it changing on the computer?
It is over here, it's not advancing. So go ahead.
Just so you can advance it? Okay, I'm just going to keep going. It's really, you know, there's not a lot of graphics at this point. Maybe if we work, if we figure it out, we can have you guys follow along, but I wanted to go over the objectives for the landscape guidelines are slightly different than the architectural ones. For the landscape, we really wanted to lead with sustainability and establish responsibilities. So when I say lead with sustainability, I mean, we, there's a lot of emphasis on water-wise focus, zero scape, emphasis on plant choice, stormwater management, the maintenance of landscaping, so encouraging composting yard waste and nutrient recycling, and stormwater irrigation. And when I talk about the establishing responsibilities, there's a lot of concern about property owners that don't maintain their landscape once they've installed it, so we've kind of emphasized on that throughout the document about who's in charge of the landscape maintenance and the quality of that maintenance being continual and successful. The document is arranged very similarly to the architectural guidelines, where we started with the place types, identified place types that need landscape guidelines. The way that it differentiates itself from the architectural guidelines is we're now including the natural areas, so we've got sensitive area guidelines, open space, and parks guidelines. Another thing that we did a little bit differently is when we identified the suburban areas and the old town, suburban residential and old town residential, a lot of those guidelines kind of cross pollinated one another, so we just ended up combining them because they were so similar to one another. So you can kind of see that in the outline and how it's done. I have a dongle if you just want to do it on your computer.
If you have that, I can.
Yeah.
Great, it would be good for everyone.
It's strange that we can see the main slide, but it won't advance. It's advancing on the laptop.
It's okay, we're working it all out, so Roger doesn't have any.
Yeah, that's right. Next thing.
You're just helping Roger out.
Someone's going to have to do it, yeah. Could we also just go to the town website and pull up the packet?
Okay, so those, this is what I was talking about in terms of the general focus areas and the importance and reason why landscape guidelines are important for the town of Berthitt, leading with sustainability and establishing responsibilities. Can you advance the next question? This is just how the document outlined, again, how we've pulled from the place types and identified character districts that are necessary to provide landscape guidelines for, all of them the same as the architectural guidelines, but this one has added natural areas, sensitive areas, and open space and parks. You can see that the document is meant to kind of go together with the, I feel like I missed something. The architecture guideline and be a kind of a document that people read together. So a lot of the, there's a lot of correlation between how they're laid out, much like the architectural guidelines, we've got an introduction that goes over how these documents will be used, and the organization highlights the sustainability. You might, you may or may not remember that when we were looking at the architectural guidelines, that symbol of a leaf was used for all the sustainability pieces that we populated through the document, and this time we're using something similar, but adding a little water drop to symbolize that water-wise focus. And then you go through the instructions and, please, and the application, and this we've added a diagram showing that it's really important that anyone using this document is first looking at the town of Berthitt comp plan, then the municipal code, and then the architecture and the landscape guidelines together. So it's sort of like a priority itemization for those that read the document. And then the objectives, and one thing that we talked about early on is making this much more of a visual guide than a text document. So hopefully that was evident when, if you went through the document, that there's lots of visuals and pictures and ways for people to have a visual basis for their application of the landscape document. Can you go back one, please? Okay. Another thing that we realized is that there are a lot of general sections that, you know, there's not a lot of landscape specific to the place types, so we introduced three general sections into the document at the beginning, and the overall guidelines being the first one, and that really is where we're putting most of the sustainability pieces and suggestions into the document, so that everyone knows that whether or not you're in the natural areas, or the industrial areas, or the suburban areas, you're still kind of guided by the sustainability portion. It's the focal point, and it's really important that everyone kind of lead with that. Plant selection, same thing, the encouraging plant selection that is native and to Colorado and low water usage, and then the maintenance design guidelines encouraging, like I said before, the compost and nutrient-rich soil, things like that. And when we get into the specific character districts, it's organized similar to the architectural guidelines, where we've got the character district, the visual management on each page, so when you're flipping through the document, you can easily tab through the guidelines, and as I mentioned before, the visual presentation, which is a lot more robust in this document than it was in the architectural. The last thing that we've been working on is a master plant list. The plant list is at the end of the document, it's just meant to be a general guide for species suitable for the front range and for the garden spot of Colorado. It's still kind of a work in progress. The, in general, and I love feedback, and I think as a town, as the planning staff and I are looking for feedback from the landscape reviewer through the town, the plant lists are kind of an ever-evolving thing, so we're trying to make it such that it provides a guidance, but also provides flexibility, so that if somebody wants to use something that's low water, native, and pollinator friendly, and it's not on this list, they have the ability to do that. And that's it. So I can answer any questions that you guys have.
All right. Well, thank you for all your work on this. Trustees, any questions?
On the plant list, have you reached out to CSU's?
Yes, we've been, so we've been working with a landscape architect, and she has suggested there's a CSU and a native, I'm going to forget the name of it, I'm going to butcher it, but they have a website that they keep live and updated, and it's actually something that I suggested that maybe we just provide that, that source for, as an option. If they don't want to use the plant list, they can go to the source that CSU has with the Denver Botanical Gardens, and it's a foreverly evolving document that basically has all of the qualities that we would want in the plants in terms of low water and native species, and so.
Because I'm on the Northern Colorado Beekeepers Association Board, and one of our other board members is at CSU, and she deals with plants, and she's always our go-to person for plants for pollinators, and.
Yeah.
Just wondering if you'd reached out to their department.
I have not reached out, no, but I'm happy to, and, but they, like I said, they have this live website that I, I think it's a really good resource, so I, I think it would be useful to think about putting it in the document.
Yeah.
As a resource, too.
Any questions?
Just got a comment.
Yeah, comments, too.
This would be kind of a nice link into our pollinator policy theme that we just did with the Girl Scout project. Link all this together with Plants for Pollinators.
Yeah.
And take the pledge for being a pollinator-friendly city and have all this linked there.
I think that's a great idea.
Be a nice addition to that single page for, for her, on her project.
Is it, so maybe we can, I can talk about what that means, the pollinator-friendly city?
Yeah, Chris, you probably get you directed to the page that you built for, and where people can take the pledge to be pollinator-friendly.
That's great.
So you kind of need to have all that interwoven together, interwebbed.
Trustee Ayers?
Yeah, just thank you for this. This is very helpful to me to understand kind of the requirements, and I think this is also really valuable to anyone who's looking for proposals. I really liked on the introduction page where if it gives leeway, right, as long as the intent satisfies the necessary functions of what the things that the town is trying to do, I really liked that you guys are putting and listing a focus on water-wise, on natural environments, on moving water instead of into the sewers, moving water to places where it can be reused by the wildlife and by the plants. And I think the picture on page 19 of 30 kind of shows the exact result that is.
Is that the natural area?
It is. It's the restoration of environmentally sensitive area versus the wetland area with needed improvements. I think that is a really good indication of why the focus on water movement, on mulching instead of just removing dead plant material is so important to making the area a natural area that can kind of sustain itself, which is very helpful. So, thank you. This is, I don't really have anything besides that.
Yeah, and I, speaking of that, I started to put in, and there's only one right now, but I've planned to, and maybe the bee, the pollinator thing can be one of them, but little tidbits, tips populate throughout the document, because they don't exactly, they're not necessarily guidelines, but they're just good practice.
Fun facts.
Yeah, fun facts. So I plan on developing that a little bit more throughout the document.
I had a question with, how many of those on the selected plant list could a citizen actually get? I know there's a lot of choices, but if you went to your.
Nursery.
Nursery.
That is, one of the landscape architect that I've been kind of consulting with on this, that's one of her pet peeves about plant lists in general, that a lot of times, because they don't get updated, you know, they don't, they, they get outdated pretty quickly. And so therefore, you know, sometimes nurseries don't have things on the list, and that's why, you know, one of the suggestions that she gave and that I'll give, you know, through her to you, to you guys, is that you really just, you can provide that resource, like the CSU website that I talked about, and somebody who's working to cultivate and update that document on a constant basis is, is going to be a lot more useful for people using it.
Okay. Northern has fantastic examples, and that was one of the issues I ran into, is it references plant select, but then you go onto the website and you're still like how to purchase it, you know? And get more information, but where could I buy those things? You know? So that was just a strategy that I had. And I generally have a tough time with landscaping, and I think it's just probably the amount of bad examples, and I know there's good examples out there. If there was a way to show more, and the visuals are beautiful, you know, but I guess seeing these visuals through developments, too, is not actually how it turns out.
Right, right, right.
If there was like actual photographs of this is a successful landscape that we're trying to mimic, that would be a lot easier for me to kind of digest, because some of the areas here look green, and that might not necessarily be the case in.
Yeah.
In a photo, so.
To remind people that zero scape begins with an X and not a Z.
Surprisingly important.
Yeah, difference.
Yeah. I actually have a couple, and I guess you have a couple, too.
Sure.
So I guess question one, kind of going back to the plant list, I know there's, these are all plants that you got listed off that makes sense, they're pollinators, they're Colorado native, they're low water use, it's all great. The inverse of that, are there any kind of forbidden plant lists, like, oh, I don't know, Russian olive, things that we don't want? Is that something that you think would be necessary to include so they can't, well, you didn't say we couldn't.
Yeah, I did not include that, because that's currently in your municipal code for, for trees planting.
Okay.
At the very least, which I think might be, I mean, I don't know if we want to expand that to shrubs or what, but that's why I didn't include it.
Sure, I don't want to like kick a hornet's nest of like, well, it wasn't on the included or excluded, so.
Right.
I don't want to have to get an impact.
You still have a measurement or a way to prevent Russian olives and ash from being planted.
Sure, okay. And the other one I had was on page 10 of 30 for the notebook, essentially it was the urban areas, specifically it says turf grass lawns, is that like AstroTurf, like fake turf that they put down, or?
No, it's just sod, I mean, grass lawn.
Are there any provisions in this regarding like AstroTurf for areas that heavily used regularly, the grass is going to get destroyed, we just want to put AstroTurf down and be done with it? Is that anything?
It's not mentioned, actually, so it's nothing that we say can't be done, but we don't really discuss it, so.
Okay.
Might, would be something we can talk about if we want to say where appropriate.
Sure, I'm not saying it has to be, and I was just curious if, in your personal or professional opinion, if that's something we should consider, or kind of leave that up to a case-by-case basis for developers?
I would, I would say that it, there are areas, certain areas that I can think of offhand where it's very appropriate, so fields for schools, and, because it's very easy for maintenance, and, and also drainage if done correctly. I can't think of anything else offhand that I would, that I would think. So maybe it is a case-by-case basis, where you guys can, or the town staff has the ability to say no, yay, or aye.
I know, in some landscape codes or landscape guidelines, artificial turf is treated like hardscape, and so where there's limitations on the amount of hardscape or where it can be utilized, it's often lumped in that way, even though it's not hard like concrete or rocks or pavers, but because it's artificial nature and it, it doesn't interact with the environment, obviously, in the same way as the, the natural plant species do, it's often treated like hardscape, so maybe that's something we can look at, and how that might fit in.
Okay.
Or just being specific about kind of where those uses might be allowed, and, you know, in general, like, you know, these landscape guidelines don't apply to people's backyards typically, right? And, you know, so if you want to put artificial turf in your backyard, more power to you, but maybe, maybe that's not something we want in front yards as a community, or maybe it is. I mean, I think that's a discussion that we could certainly have.
Okay. Otherwise, it was a great packet, very informative, very well designed, very well laid out, so thank you.
Great, thank you.
Trustee Belli?
Again, I think it was great. One of my comments or questions was actually about artificial turf. I happen to just put, sorry, or have turf put in my backyard.
Oh, yeah, how do you like it?
I love it, actually.
Yeah.
I think it's, so I've got some heritage, I guess, in landscaping, so I know a little bit about it, but it's really come a long ways, you know, artificial turf and the technologies and how durable it is and how good it looks, I mean, it almost looks so real these days. So I would like to see that incorporated, I think that with the low water usage, and I think there's definitely, you know, hardscape locations where it does apply, and it can serve, I think, a great purpose. So I would highly encourage that to be incorporated in here, to, you know, encourage it in the right spaces, and then give some direction on, you know, how, where it's appropriate.
Right.
Especially more high foot traffic, you know, areas, I've seen it used commercially and so forth, where it, I think it works great.
Yeah, I agree.
Other question, I guess, to, I guess, staff or you, cost factors, you know, something I'm always conscious of, and we talk about, and we balance this, the affordable, you know, housing or even commercial space. In general, I think this is great to give more direction with landscaping, where we've been missing the mark in, you know, allowing some developers or builders, for example, to not quite maintain the really scope or intent of what we're hoping to see. But cost-wise, do, have we done any analysis with what this looks like with new development?
No, not compared, you know, I think the interesting thing about new development, particularly a single-family residential, is what typically gets installed is grass, one tree, and some rocks, and maybe three or four shrubs, and that, that's the least expensive landscape option they have, that's why it's easy to install, and I think people, including myself, like grass, right? So what this requires, what this would require is a little more thoughtful planning in each landscape than kind of just turf down the street, so it is going to be more expensive. We have not done a direct cost analysis, partly because I think creative design can also be less expensive, but still look great, and so. Because of how flexible the opportunity to make these design changes are, the only things I think that we could reasonably quantify probably are like, you know, in areas where we're saying we, we think there need to be larger trees installed than what we might currently allow, there's, there's a clear direct cost associated with some of those changes, but otherwise, in some cases, you know, like a water-wise landscape could be less expensive to install, depending on how it's designed. I guess, I guess what I'm saying is hard to create a real clear direct cost comparison.
Well, we know it's going to increase costs, though.
Yeah, I think there, I think the reality is it's likely to be a little more expensive. I mean, for commercial developments, I don't think that's the case. In fact, I think it's probably less likely, but for a single-family residential, it is probably, it has the potential to be a little more expensive.
And then last question on that note, you know, reading the suburban and old town residential area, bullet point one, it says, you know, all land development applications except building permits for individual single-family homes should retain a licensed landscape architect for plans. Does that, to translate, does that mean that new homes are exempt from that? Or would a new home, building permit require a landscape plan for each home?
We've talked about how to approach that, which, can you point to that spot in the document, just so I can?
It's page nine.
Yeah, and I can answer it, too, if you want.
Yeah, thank you, Erin, go ahead.
What that, that comment is meant to address is a lot, not, not making a single-family homeowner on hook for these improvements, but making sure that a developer that's developing a neighborhood is responsible for these types of implementations, so.
For the development, but not.
For the development.
But not individual homes necessarily.
Well, if they're, if they're developing the individual homes, they have to plan for that, that landscape plan for those homes.
As a broad, I guess what I'm asking is, is it?
Yeah, like as a, as a.
Is it a landscape plan like we normally see in our, you know?
Subdivision, a neighborhood.
Right, or master plan, we see in the landscape details.
Yeah, so what we've talked about, we think that the easiest way to approach these is similar to, like, in a, in a subdivision, what's most typical outside of, you know, custom. What's most typical outside of, you know, custom home neighborhoods, right, which are unique. But in most, most typical subdivisions, developer will have, you know, six or seven master plans, uh, for different house, you know, houses they will build. Each one of those master plans might have three or four different elevations, right, so the outside looks different, but the inside's all structurally the same and. And we would see landscape master plans, um, that would be, that we could approve during the development process or for a, a builder. You know, if, if you were building one single custom home, then you would come in and bring a landscape plan. It doesn't have to be done by a li- licensed landscape architect, as this is written, right, um, for a single ha- home permit, but. If you're a builder and you're building forty homes, then just like you would get your, um.
Engineer.
Your engineer or your architect to do a standard set of plans for the six homes you're gonna build, the six different home types you're gonna build. You would do the same thing with landscape and, and those would be flexible enough that, you know, obviously the shape of the lot dictates a lot of how that happens, right? But in most subdivisions, the lots are pretty standard, they're pretty standard in size. And so being able to say, this is kind of the master plan for the landscape and it can be adjusted as needed based on the actual size and shape of the lot. But, um.
With the concept.
But the concept, we could approve, um, landscape master plans, just like we do for home floor plan, master plans.
I think that'd be great. A lot of the flexibility.
And then that way it gives them some flexibility and, but then we can have a pretty good idea and, and that there's some variation involved, right? So it's not just, you're not just duplicating the same landscape in everybody's front yard. And it may be even something that then the homeowner can then choose and say, I really like this style of landscape as opposed to this one. But the.
But it gets executed.
That's right, and that more of these principles are adopted rather than the, the single tree and turf concept.
Right.
Right.
Okay, yeah, I think that'd be great, I'd, I'd like to see that more, I think in a master plan, uh, like sense.
Yeah.
Allow the flexibility with it, but.
Cause I don't think it makes sense to create a custom landscape plan for every single lot in the entire town.
Right, yeah, builders are.
It's just not gonna make sense, it's not gonna make sense for builders, but it's not hard, it's not hard for them in the context of building. Oftentimes in a, in a development like um, Hammond Farm or Vantage, you know, the, the same builder might be building three hundred homes in that subdivision. And they might have seven floor plans, each one with three elevations, so it's kind of twenty-one options. You could do kind of the same thing with landscape, you could do five or six landscape master plans that can be adjusted again, uh, based on need.
Right.
For each lot, but.
And to avoid some of the monotony, you know, you have spacing requirements for elevations and paint colors and so forth.
Exactly.
Does that make sense for, in these, you know, raw home neighborhoods to require some spacing with a landscape concept?
I think it does.
I do too, if, if that's something that can be managed.
Could you, that last point, could you ex- explain in a little more depth?
Sorry, so, uh, you know, development guidelines currently require, I just call them spacing requirements.
Yep, that's what they are.
To, uh, prevent the same floor plan or the same elevation or the same paint color to be built side by side or like across the street. To create diversity down the block.
And so our planning team, each builder has to submit a plan for, we're gonna build this floor plan on this lot and this one on this lot and this one on this lot. So that they don't get repeated next to each other, um, unless they're totally different elevations, in which case you could probably build. The same floor plan, but they look completely different on the outside, which can be done in architecture really easily. But we do have spacing requirements so that they don't get repeated, so they don't get built next to each other, they don't create this kind of monotonous streetscape.
So we could essentially have the same concept for the landscaping guidelines to create some variety of types of plants used, locations and so forth. To get a little variety down the block, diversity as well. Sometimes it's hard to achieve that, you know, you get a production home builder that, you know, builds five floor plans and they build three hundred homes, you know, in a tight proximity. One way you can achieve that diversity beyond just the physical structure is the landscaping.
Yeah, I think that's a good suggestion.
And what about enforcement with the individual homes? You brought up enforcement earlier, but, I mean, so if a plant dies, is neighborhood services coming around and saying?
Well, so that's, that's kind of an interesting part of this, so the landscape guidelines, like the architecture guidelines are not law. And so they're intended to provide context, um, but they're adopted in such a way that they're expected to be followed, right? So like when a builder comes in, now then pieces of this can be translated into code that we then can impose as law, right? And so we may want to say in code, if the tree dies, you must replace it, right? We've talked about that a lot, this is a good example, uh, that would be a code requirement rather than a landscape or a landscape guideline, right? And so, but landscape guidelines are intended to provide context and, and color, uh, no pun intended, but like to, to the code itself, right? So the code might say, you know, have some very specific requirements about the number of trees and how, and, you know, all that stuff. This talks about how do you plant them, where do they go, what should they look like, what should they, um. You know, what species should they be, all those kinds of things, right? This provides that context for the code requirements. And then the pieces that we wanna take and make stronger in code, we can do.
Just, yeah, my opinion on that, it's a double edged sword, I would hate to have neighborhood enforcement going in and kinda dictating, you gotta replace a shrub. But on the other hand, I've just seen so many examples of zero scape and going south because it just turns into a rock garden, because no one replaced that plant. And I think we're talking sustainability, which is kinda already a tough thing for me to wrap my head around with this. It would just create a hot mess, you know, and make life harder on the trees. And, uh, I brought the, um, document from Amy Lentz that's on our tree committee, but fortunately I didn't really bring any copies. But it talks about the need to even irrigate your trees in winter and I just, are we planning for irrigation to spread out as a tree grows? That's her point with this is, um, you know, you don't just water for the first three years, this is a, a commitment. And that small drip line has to expand with the crown the farther it grows. Are, are we putting that in there, cause otherwise I see if plants die, no water, that tree is gonna be stressed, so neighborhood services is gonna be. At someone's house all the time saying, you gotta put that tree back, but it's kind of a, I don't know, it feels a little cruel at the same time.
It is, it's, that's always the real hard balance, right? I think if the intent is that the landscapes are maintained, how you do that, if you wanna go out there with a watering hose and water that, water that tree to keep it maintained. Or if you wanna extend a drip line, expand that drip line over time as appropriate. I think it's okay to leave it up to people how they handle that with the expectation that it be maintained in a reasonable fashion, that the, the plan that was approved stays the plan that was approved. At the same time, you're right, it's tough to go in and say, hey, this tree died and you must replace it. And you must spend, you know, a few hundred dollars to replace it with a large tree, um, you know, at a minimum. That, that gets to be a tough.
Yeah, or, you know.
Gets to be a tough spot.
My thing with turf is my yard's really shaded, so I probably irrigated twice last summer.
Yep.
And I understand with newer homes and a lot of, you know, probably folks on the board where you got a lot of sunny areas and that's probably where more of the irrigation is. But it, it just goes dormant, you know, but if a bunch of plants die in your front yard and we're not saying replace it, then we're creating a whole street of rock gardens. So there's gotta be some, some mechanism, I, I guess my point is that turf is just kind of the.
Do we have any guidelines on irrigation and things like that and talk about smart controllers and?
We don't have that in there right now.
I think that would be really great and I think that was something that Tim and I talked about at our retreat that kind of started this, I know Administrator Kirk really wanted this too, but I think. It would really tie into existing residents of, yeah, how do we improve water on that aspect of?
Cause like my, my controller, it dials in, it can dial into your smart thermostat or.
In mine.
Just your wifi and it calls out to whatever news agency and you can select what weather thing it does. And so it actually waters my lawn based on the weather report and what they reported is how much rainfall we've gotten and. So I'll get little notifications on my phone saying, no, it's not gonna water your lawn today cause there's a rainstorm due in the afternoon.
Yeah, yeah, that, I, I think that would be great and then also just checking for leaks and not just to me. And on, like a gem kind of stuff that, uh, we should be accomplishing anyways, cause it's just efficiency, um, so I'd, I'd love to see that.
I think you're right and I think there is, there's good sense in having some specific language, um, not, you know, we're not gonna specify what controller you have to install and all those things, but. You know, making it clear that smart controllers are expected to be installed with landscaping, the automatic irrigation.
Mm-hmm.
Is expected and, and required.
And the builder could put that in.
In landscapes, and they, they all do already and I think, you know, for me and the, uh. When you have to have a landscape plan, that landscape plan always includes how you're gonna water it, right? But I think being clear about what the expectation is, I think that's, that's a great comment.
Okay.
Can I clarify, so I just, I feel like I heard, um, different things, I just wanna clarify, we're talking about. Not only guidelines for new development and developers, but we're also talking about codes for existing development and existing landscapes.
No, I, I mean, I think, you know, in the context of somebody that wanted, what's great about this is if somebody said, hey, I wanna tear out my front yard and re-landscape. Does the town have guidelines? The answer is yeah, but the town's not gonna go in and start forcing existing homes to retrofit their landscapes. According to these guidelines and our code wouldn't allow us to do that, I don't think the board would want us to do that. But this provides context for when you do wanna redesign your landscape and kind of what, what does the town want and what is the expectation?
Permitting or?
Future permitting on new homes.
In Old Town, what about in Old Town? Or a significant redevelopment, like Arvatus had any sig- or is it Warburg said any significant redevelopment?
I think, you know, if you were gonna tear down a house and come in and rebuild one in Old Town.
Yeah.
Then, and, and you were gonna re-landscape as part of that, you would be required to follow these guidelines.
See, I think there's problems with that too, especially if you look at Mary's Farm, who did, was required to donate one unit of CBT. And, I mean, this is a very small chance that whenever a house gets significantly modeled, but I think coming with that land, they came w- with that water. So for us to then say, well, no, that's gonna get passed on to new development, that, that'd be, it's a little tough when you're in the older communities.
One unit of CBT, did they do that per house?
Uh, yeah, per house they had to, they didn't have to dedicate, but it was paid at that amount and then.
Oh, I see.
The town bought it like we do now.
So, um, comment on that, there's a lot of red flags going up for me with that. When somebody purchases a property, it's theirs and it's kind of their creative domain within reason, I think. But I know a lot of people who have rock gardens, for example, because that, maybe they're, they're elderly and they can't water or they can't maintain it. So they did, they got an architect to do rock gardens or something like that. So there's things like that, that that's their creative domain, in my opinion, and how you wanna landscape your yard shouldn't. I, I don't think we should be putting finer restrictions on the entire town. I think there's, um, I think it's, it's good that, you know, maybe we put some restrictions on our new developments because they are big in scale. And we could have a very big impact on water savings and, and just showing a, a desire to create more water wise landscaping. With these bigger developments that are coming in, but to impose codes on existing homeowners, I think creates a really. It's an unfair environment because they purchased that home under a completely different guidelines and codes. And have done things with their yards that they wouldn't be able to replicate or their neighbors couldn't replicate if they updated it. I just think that that gets into a, a controlling aspect that I don't think makes our community very welcoming. But education wise, we could help people to update their yards to.
Yeah, and I think it's important to recognize though that the only time somebody would need to address these guidelines is if they were choosing to tear out their existing yard. And so if you have a yard full of grass, you're not gonna tear it out and put it back, right? I mean, if you're rehabbing the grass, that's fine, I don't know that we care anyway and, and, and I don't think our code speaks to that. This isn't code in that sense anyway. But if somebody intended to tear out their grass and re-landscape in a different fashion, then we would want them to, to consider these guidelines and address their landscape, these guidelines. And I think they're, I think they're really flexible in, in their ability to be creative and to exercise creative domain. These are not ultra prescriptive, like there are some guidelines that say you cannot use more than thirty percent turf. And you have to use this rock and you have to use pavers on your driveways or whatever, right? Like, that's not what these guidelines say.
But it did have a limit on turf.
Yeah, I thought we had something.
Turf lawns are discouraged.
There is a limit on.
Except areas where adjacent outdoor living areas such as patios and other things, right?
You also said that you have to have a certified landscaped architect involved in the process and that.
But not for single family homes.
Not for single, not for individual, I think, I get what you're saying and I, and I get what you're saying too, um, there. We need to be, provide, um, some clarif- clarifying language in the document that makes sure that. Somebody, like you said, who wants their private domain to look the way they do, doesn't necessarily feel like they're obligated to follow every strict guideline that's in this document. I don't think, and, and, um, you can tell me if this is incorrect, but I don't think the town has any leverage to review that anyway. You could just hand it to them and say, here are our guidelines.
Yep.
But there's no process for review or approval, I mean, in the end, a homeowner can do whatever they want. What we're trying to do most broadly is to control the developers that are coming in and building these neighborhoods. Um, and which we do have control over, we have a little bit of control over the review process and the FDP process and. The final approvals for these buildings and site plans. So in that sense, we have a little bit of leverage to say, okay, you need to implement, implement some of these guidelines. But an individual homeowner, I don't think there's any, any method right now.
We don't issue landscape permits, right?
Yeah.
So I think this, we would for new development, but in existing home, again, if you wanted to tear out your yard and you wanted to know what the town's guidelines are. We would hand you those guidelines and say, we'd like you to follow this, we don't have any mechanism to force them to. Not currently, I mean, if the board wants us to change the code, we can, but that's not, that's not the intent of this process.
I appreciate the clarification on intent, that helps a lot and I think the language is gonna be really important. So homeowners don't feel like they're disobeying a code or.
Right.
Those restrictions of the town, because I think generally people want to be complying and to make it feel like they're part of this process of updating our town in a way that's. We're all working towards something together instead of them being forced into something that they're not ready to do.
And, and again, this is, e- even the beginning of the document talks about how this applies to proposed new development in Bertha. To be used by the staff in processing and evaluating project applications, it's, it's not really intended to be. Our goal is not to go in and start making everybody tear out turf, in fact, that, that really has nothing to do with this landscape guideline process. It's there if somebody wants to and we can say, hey, look, these are our guidelines, these are, are, are required for new projects. But the, we don't have any mechanism to go in and start forcing people to tear out their existing yards, nor do I think we should.
Yeah, I, I get that point.
We can do incentives, like some cities do.
Absolutely, if somebody wants to, that's a different story.
If we got more, is it all right if we open it up to the public?
Sure.
Okay, cool. Uh, someone raised?
Yeah.
A doctor. Uh, 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 Clerk Smaug wanted you to come to the front, or people that wanna speak come to the front.
Our microphone array is kind of above this area, so it will hear you better if you, if you don't mind coming up.
Yeah, sorry.
Come on.
My question actually, um, and Trustee Sirsley, I mean, thank you for asking those clarified questions, cause I was, I was very, I was kind of getting concerned about. Some of the direction on, um, you know, restrictive and the choir and those kinds of things. So I appreciate that this is for larger developments, my, my clarifying questions are. How does this fit with the idea of tree lined streets, um, that we currently encourage in developments? Are we gonna, is this incorporated as waivers for, you know, we wanted the garden spot to have trees on all our streets? How are we incorporating all those with water wise and in oh four, oh five and oh six, Denver Water in Denver? Um, had a lot of neighborhoods that were doing, um, zero scape developments, Western Poolscapes did the Pepsi Center. I mean, they did massive zero scape projects for commercials, so there's plenty of historical documents that Denver Water has on record. For cost savings, the value of the water that was saved, right? Um, so we do have some history there, um, because those were mandatory and then we're also doing it as Denver Water because it was a water shortage. When you're talking about the plants and stuff that you're using and drips and all of that, how are we incorporating? If we are saying you can only water it every other day or, I mean, how are those things looking for the larger developments? And what incentives are being provided, um, to encourage them to go zero scape? If this is a suggestion and not a requirement, so those are just some of my thoughts I had.
Thank you, do you wanna answer that?
Yes, I think on the tree lines, our, our code already requires tree line streets, this doesn't change our code, it just provides context and character to the code. So that doesn't change, tree line streets are already in the code and those aren't going away. And the required number of trees and how all those get planted and how wide tree lines have, all that's in development code already, that's not changing. With respect to incentives, I think we don't typically incentivize, like we don't incentivize. we don't typically incentivize, like, we don't incentivize builders to do better architecture on the houses. We just tell them they have to do it. And I think that's a decision the board has to make. If you don't wanna do changed landscape guidelines for new development, you don't have to. We're proposing that you do, um, to help implement the ideas articulated in the comprehensive plan, right? That this is kind of a natural outgrowth, as were the architectural guidelines. And the intent is that we're creating specific kinds of places, right? Uh, we've talked a lot about place types, but that's a policy decision the board gets to make, right? And again, these, um, the way the guidelines are written, they're expected to be used in new development applications. They're expected to be, um, I mean, the language is all here in the first few pages, but, um, the guidelines will apply to all new construction and substantial building alterations that require approval by the town of Bertha Community Development Department staff and the planning department, building department. So for our code, um, incorporating these guidelines into a project design result and aesthetically pleasing and compatible landscape in new developments. There's a lot of language in here about this. It's about new projects, major changes. And again, I think, you know, we can incentivize that if the board wants to.
So the the staff isn't proposing any lower water dedication fee?
Not yet. Nope.
Makes you feel better.
I thought there was something already existing for tree lawns because there was, I remember being a citizen and participating in this debate years ago. Cause so many people were replacing their green lawns with, and it was killing off the trees cause the temperatures were getting too hot around the trees, drying out the soil. And so it didn't make a good environment for trees to be in the tree lawn then. So I thought we made some revisions to our code that required that there had to be a certain percentage of like natural matter and not just rock so that it wouldn't kill off the trees that are in the tree lawn.
I'm not aware of that. I don't know if, I don't think, I don't think that was ever adopted as code.
This is more or less maybe just a suggestion that you don't put hundred percent rock in your tree lawn.
Might be.
Yeah, and I saw you mention gorilla hair, so I looked that up and that seems like a good organic cover. I I agree with, to my neighbor, uh, a block down from me is an arborist. And he was saying, you know, the whole state's trying to work on a replacement for turf that you can have around trees, you know, uh, it's really tough. So I'm, I'm really just worried about it turning into all rocks. I agree with Trusty Hardy, too. Any way we can kind of keep a a natural ground cover, especially if it's a living, would be great.
Well, and and to that, with the zero-scaping, I was trying to check the document to see if that was defined anywhere. I think it would help to have that definition and, like the mayor said, maybe some visuals. Because I think, I think there's, I misconceptions and other people misconceptions of it, too. But it it can be done really beautifully and look organic and earthy. I think it's hard to visualize it sometimes if we don't have that defined or defined in how we are interpreting it and and, you know, putting it into effect. So that would help me a lot to know what zero-scaping is, how we're, how we're basing that into these designs and how it's gonna still maintain that garden spot feel. Because I think that's, I think there's a concern that we're gonna go toward this landscape that doesn't feel gardeny.
Yeah.
And so to maybe implement some more plants that use that that same field garden spot, I don't know. If that makes any sense.
For what it's worth, these are not zero-scape guidelines. So I think, I I don't want there to be a misconception that the intent of these guidelines is to require what everyone considers zero-scape.
No, I just, to define that in this document might be helpful so we know what that is and how, maybe how we are incorporating some of that into this, if, or or if we're not. I think that's important to to lay out, too, that it's not zero-scaping or it is zero-scaping and here's how we're just, because that's a common term that people are using. And I think that's something people do know about and we're using it even in this discussion. So I think we just need to see it clearly defined.
Yeah, and I think you're right. I think zero-scape is kind of a bad word. I mean, let's be all, let's all be honest. What what most people think when they hear the word zero-scape is Las Vegas, right? Like, all rock and some cactus. One, that's not our intent at all. And and two, I think it's, I think, you know, what we did do in some of our other guideline documents is like a this, not this, right? With pictures. And so I think we can do that really clearly and say, this is not what we're talking about. This is. Right? So if it's unclear in the in the in text, in the context, it's, I think it's really easy to do. We can go and do that. That's a good suggestion.
Well, and those suggestions are to be critical of what you prepared. It's amazing.
Yeah, no, I totally get.
Like a little hole.
It's just great. This is really great feedback. Thank you so much. It's great to be hearing the, um, the opinions and we can incorporate everything.
I have a couple of questions. Um, do we have the resources to enforce this in the town? And then, um, you know, where do you draw the line? Part of this is aesthetics, it sounds like, right? So your grass. How brown is too brown? How, when is it green enough? When it's got crabgrass all in it? When it's got weeds all in it? How does that fall into this this discussion?
Yeah, so again, I think, um, you know, there's some maintenance design guidelines, some expectations outlined in this document, but they're not code. We do have code that says, you know, if your grass is, I I'm maybe Christians, probably. Twelve inches, uh, if it's more than twelve inches tall, you've exceeded the limits of of, you know, appropriate grass height. And we can come in then, under our code, and require you to cut it down. So we have some of those code requirements already in place that aren't dealt with here. But those, those are really for kind of the worst offenders, if I can say it that way.
The developer put grass in going into, um, here on Lakes and it's hundred percent dead. It's like cement. I mean, that's brand new. They just did it this summer. Would 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 the town be enforcing something like that or did that?
We would be, um, in areas where there are approved installed landscapes. But, um, in, you know, and a lot of times, they'll, you know, a developer will do grading work. And then before they go in and landscape, they'll, they'll seed temporarily so that, you know, holds the soil together for a few years before they come in and landscape, those are typically not real attractive, but we also wouldn't force them to go in and landscape necessarily.
This was sod and they just didn't want it.
Yeah, so that's, yeah, sod's a different story.
And then the size, the size, that's part, is that part of the guidelines, the size of trees, the size of shrubs? And then it was a good point made. I know, um, uh, we're on non-potable water and we don't control the times that we can water or the days. And then, you know, you get into July and August and we're restricted to a few hours a couple of times a week. How do you hold the homeowner accountable when they don't control, you know, the watering? Just again, these are just things I think we need to consider.
Yeah, so, uh, Heron Lakes is unique in that the landscape water is provided and controlled by the metro district. It's not a town utility. And so there are some districts that have their own non-pot systems and they have restrictions on watering that we do not at the town level. That's the case out in Heron Lakes. Generally speaking, and and I only know this to be true because this is how I water my yard. I have an acre of of grass and trees and plants. And I only water three days a week and everything stays green all year. And so I think it's a lot about how you water, not so much when you wa- well, it is about when you water also, but it's a lot about when you water, but it's about how you water. It's about when you water. You know, and so, and actually, I think one of the biggest problems that we have from just a general maintenance standpoint is that a lot of folks feel like they gotta water their grass twice a day, seven days a week. And that's absolutely not necessary. It's it's overwatering, it's wasting water, it actually causes a lot of other issues, um, because of saturated soils and things like that. So some of that's just an educational deal. But in in Heron Lakes specifically, you know, I think we also have to be reasonable in our application of maintenance standards when if we were in a drought scenario and 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 you weren't allowed to water your yard at all, we wouldn't be out cracking down on people. You know, I think it's just a practical reasonableness that has to be applied in the application of code. But your grass also won't be more than twelve inches tall, so we won't be out beating you up about that, so.
I don't advocate this, but I'm, I thought that, um, last summer, California passed a law that all new residents, single-family homes cannot have yards, cannot have grass. Again, I'm not going there. I'm just saying, you know, yeah.
My sister lives there, so.
There's pretty aggressive things out there.
California adopted, um, seven or eight years ago, what's called the Model Water Efficiency Landscape Ordinance statewide, um, and it's very heavy-handed. And it changed how local municipalities handle landscape, new landscape installations. Every single house has to have hydrozone calculations, all these. I mean, it is very, very heavy-handed. That's not what we want to do here.
I think education's definitely key and and the other thing is, but we're talking about turf here is and maybe including the references to the Northern Colorado Wildlife Conservancy place. Because if you ever wander out there, they've got gardens out there that are perfect examples of this is this type of grass, this is this type of grass, here's this type of grass. People go out there and actually see large patch, not just little pictures or little segments, but actual, I could go out there and walk on it, sit in it and go, yeah, kinda like this grass. This is the best water conserv.
Different irrigation things, too, that.
Yeah, so they've got plants out there.
For for branding the town, I think this is great. I mean, this is this is direction and I think it's very good and it just enhances everything over time, so good work.
Let's make a final comment on on that. And I I think the branding is good. And I, again, just worry about the brownness and me being kind of sensitive to visuals. Christmas lights are huge to me because of color, you know, otherwise it's just really bleak here until spring, until it gets green and colorful. But if we're kind of forcing that, it seems like we're forcing a drought, you know? So I think color is a big thing. And we're talking about sustainability. To me, there is plenty of water in Northern Colorado and and it's just acquiring those shares, which is is difficult, right? And if the water is already allocated, right, if we're not allowed to take any more out, water out of the river, the sustainability aspect, I'm still kind of struggling with, cause it's, nothing we're doing here is gonna help the river out. Or or the rivers, plural.
And I think we've talked about this a little bit before. I I really feel like it's less about water rights and raw water and it's more about water treatment. You know, in most cases, and we've talked about this before, but, you know, we we might produce a million gallons a day in the winter time when there's no out-to-rigation. And in the summertime, we produce four million gallons a day. That treatment capacity is very expensive.
So I'm, I totally agree. I would just lean towards this as an efficiency strategy, not a sustainability strategy.
Well, I think there's, you know, sustainability is, and now I have to be older, I think, right?
But that.
It's easier to sell.
It's easy to sell, but it also, you know.
I think it is, but it worries me that we're greenwashing. And that that goes back to plants dying and it just getting hotter here. Um, so anyway, I, yeah, I don't want to.
But I think that's all the more reason to use more native plant species and those types of things, right? As the climate changes, um, you know, if it does get hotter, that that those plant species are already intended to live here, right? That we're not planting, uh, you know, heavy water uses, cause cause frankly, and I think, you know, I'm sure you guys know this, but I just, I remember early on, when I started here around four or five years ago, asking like, what's the garden spot all about? And somebody sent me a little uh, explanation from the Historical Society about how it was kind of this marketing ploy, right? Cause, cause this wasn't a garden spot. It's actually, it's actually a desert, right? I mean, kind of for all intensive purposes. And, uh, and so I think there's this balance between being lush and garden-like, but also being respectful of the fact that we get very little annual precipitation here. You know, relative to places where it is, where you're trying to get rid of water, right? Like on the East Coast and the South, um, rather than using it efficiently and so. Native plant species and those things will help adjust to changing climates, which I think is sustainability.
I think if we can focus on color more, that helps with the garden spot.
I agree with that.
I think a part of that green thing, and you're right, that's what I read, too, was it was a like a marketing strategy. But, you know, one of the founders, I forgot what he wrote in his book, but it was, uh, he called it a vast wasteland that we've moved into. So the improvements that we make attract people. So I just wanna keep the colors there.
I agree with that completely.
You're talking a lot of smack about some high plains here.
Want to talk about this? So we haven't referred to this zero-scape and based on everything the mayor just mentioned, I would like to see that I think that addressed in this document. I don't know if we ever have anything on a town level with zero-scape guidelines or suggestions.
We don't.
I think this, I, to me, this makes sense. This is where we put it. As some direction, as an alternative, you know, to some of these guidelines, this is what may be a zero-scape. And then illustrations and visuals, I think, are really important as well. To Trusty Sorsoli, so a lot of HOAs in metro districts are grappling with this same conversation. You know, we're doing it on a town level, but, uh, I think this would be a great, just leading document that then can be shared through all the, you know, local HOAs, for example. Many of the members are already asking, how do I, you know, zero-scape my grass or yards? And they don't really have guidelines in place, um, so they're trying to scramble to figure that out. What, you know, how do we, how do we make it not look like a ugly wasteland, rock yard? So I'd encourage that.
I think that's certainly our intent, so I think we can be a little more specific about how we address that in the document.
Well, I, to that point, I think it's a great opportunity with what's already in the document and what we've covered to have some sort of educational opportunities or events from the town level with the community to say, here's plants, here's where you could get them. Here's some demonstrations or here's a couple of demonstrations in town you could go visit and ask questions. Cause I think there are people who want to update or I would love for my yard to not just be lawn and suck up water, like. But we don't always know unless someone shows us. So I think it'd be great to ha- to have this be the springboard for that and have it be educational and something that we do every year to have those educational events. And so thank you for putting that in here, cause I think that would be helpful.
Anything else from the audience? Uh, planning and zoning or anyone not in planning and zoning? Okay, anything else from the board? Well, thank you so much. I think we all, yeah, we all agree. This is a great document.
Yeah.
Sounds like some stuff needs to be fleshed out, but that's why we have study sessions.
That's right. Those are great feedbacks, so thank you all.
All right, uh, let's move right on to the First Street Overlay. Is that Mr. Sherman?
Let's see if Roger's computer plugs in.
Yeah, is this gonna work, right?
We'll try it.
This is the.
Okay.
So good luck.
Thank you. All right. Welcome, by the way.
Oh, well, thank you, yeah.
Did you get a new Mini Cooper? Is that?
No, it's the same one.
Well, it's the same one, okay. It looks extra nice. Oh, we'd also plug this in.
I'm sorry. Oh, here we go. All right, well, thanks for having us again tonight. Appreciate, uh, all of you being here and planning commission as well. And, uh, as you know, we had our third community meeting tonight. And so that was an exciting milestone to reach. It's a, uh, the last one that's on our our schedule and we got some good feedback tonight. And, uh, let's see, I'll see if I can make this any larger for you guys. But you've seen this this document for before. It really just highlights the project limits, which are from Highway two eighty-seven on the north to the, uh, almost a mountain that we stop right where the mountain overlay, uh, starts. Uh, and then we go from the railroad tracks to about one block east of First. And, uh, so that's the the limits of our study area. And we actually even pushed outside of those slightly on the east side, uh, to to start thinking about transitions here. But, uh, so some of these boards are vertical format, so, uh, so they're a little difficult to see, but, uh, I'll just highlight again, uh, some of the, as background information. I'm gonna make this really quick, too. I'm gonna try and make this whole presentation fifteen minutes or less so we can have time for questions and answers. And we've got one more project to highlight, too, real quick, so. Uh, but as as we talked about, what some of the big concepts are here, are trying to make sure that the uses along First Street are, uh, attractive, uh, uses. So we're recalling those high-visibility innovation areas, which are the light purple areas. And then the areas which tucked back behind and off First Street, uh, are lower visibility, uh, areas and might be subject to lesser architectural standards to allow businesses to get into the market a little lesser cost in those areas. Uh, the orange color represents urban residential, which was kind of, all of these uses kind of reflect what was shown in the 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 new comp- comprehensive plan. And then, uh, we've got some streets, uh, at, um, County Road ten and, uh, Bunyan that are, uh, of a higher pedestrian priority and bike priority. And then, uh, Water Avenue, which places a little bit more on, uh, priority on automobiles, but still has all of the facilities for pets and bikes as well. It's just, uh, uh, it's just the way that we're thinking of it conceptually. And the biggest reason for that is, uh, the the two pedestrian-oriented streets kind of get in into Sunny Slope Reservoir and and Bacon Lake. And, uh, Water Avenue, when extended, can go quite a ways east and become a really big east-west connector through town eventually as the, as things change in town. Okay, next. We can come back to things if you have questions. So tonight's neighborhood really, meeting really focused on the visual side of this, uh, this project. And we've had previous conversations about that for architectural visual preferences. And, uh, so we, and we've gotten a lot of good feedback from the neighbors in the past, which we've tried to, uh, incorporate now into these updated concepts. And one of the biggest places we've made a change is in the last community meeting, we were suggesting a street with a raised median all the way down, uh, to the, to the roundabout at First and, and Mountain. And after hearing neighbors input, uh, and there's a lot of existing businesses between, uh, Mountain and Bunyan and that have a lot of driveways that are pretty close to the street edge. And so what we've tried to do is really narrow this, uh, this street cross section so that, to account for that, to try and lessen the impact to, to those adjacent property owners. So there's, there's no raised median and that also allows for a lot of those existing driveways to be accessing, uh, the First Street in both directions, just like they have access today. So that was, uh, one of the really key parts of, uh, of this, uh, of this section. And then the, the architecture, uh, for all of these views that's closest to the street, we're suggesting even, even enhancements if they can afford to do them, uh, we're not requiring them, but if, if things change use over time and, uh, those kinds of things could be enhanced so that First Street really has, uh, a nice sense, sense of character in place along its length, uh, would be, would be a great idea here. But you can also see that we've incorporated bike lanes and, and pedestrian walkways, uh, to, to support that kinda use along the entire corridor. This is a, a view of, uh, First Street looking kinda southwest, just north of Water Street or Water Avenue, pardon me. Uh, so the, on the right-hand side, the little silo and barn is that existing, uh, farmhouse right by Northern Water. And then the, the block south of that would be, obviously all of those would be all new, new buildings we're showing in the background. Uh, and this would be the intersection of Water, uh, future signalized intersection potentially at, at this, this location. Uh, and this concept shows a raised median and we've got another image that shows something that feels a bit more of a rural kind of look with a more of a depressed median. But, uh, so just different things to consider and, and, uh, you know, water-wise landscaping could be used here. We, maybe the streets, trees could be clustered, you know, using the same number of trees, but maybe pushing them together in smaller groupings and then having bigger spaces in between the trees where you could do, uh, sunnier, sunnier landscaping that takes less water. Uh, another idea that we've tossed around, which, uh, we're kind of excited about is maybe this, this street could include fifty percent or more flowering trees. And, uh, we would also encourage trees that have a, a nice fall color, uh, along this corridor. So this, this could be one of the most beautiful tree, uh, tree-lined streets to drive down in the springtime in Colorado. And, uh, so it could again add to that garden spot kinda character.
Do you have the ability to make it go full screen?
Oh, uh, I can.
Bottom right icon in the vertical menu, looks like it'll go full screen.
The arrows?
The little, the little box with the four arrows.
Oh, yeah.
That should make it go full screen. I think, on the right, on the right side, Roger.
Tool bar in the far right.
Oh, we can do it under presentation too, we can go to presentation, yeah.
There we go.
All right.
Just to make it a little easier to see, sorry, yeah.
Thanks guys, appreciate that. And Aaron, appreciate that. Uh, and then on each of these sheets, we've also added architectural imagery and, uh, what we've heard, I, we, we keep trying to get closer and closer to what, what we're hearing from the community. We hear quite often that, uh, they like the, the historic character of the town, uh, that it's very agricultural, that, uh, and so we've, but at the same time, this is an industrial zone and we're trying to find good examples that portray those characteristics and those features. And, uh, based on what we've heard tonight, uh, there's, there's, we're still not quite there from some of the community members' perspective. There are some examples they liked and then some that we heard, uh, they weren't as excited about, so. This is the, uh, other option that I mentioned that we asked, uh, folks to, and, and you know, the possibility is the, the character could change along the, the street's length, right? So this previous slide was saying this section between Bunyan and, and Water could have raised medians. The next slide says, well, maybe north of that, you could do depressed, kinda more flush median that create more of a rural character. So it could kinda transition from a more rural character into a more urban character as you get closer to town. And that transition point could happen anywhere along the length of the, the street. Uh, but, and, and this kinda portrays that idea on, on the sides, uh, where you could, if you group the trees together on the sides, you could open up these areas for more perennial low water plantings, uh, in, in some spots as a, as a possibility. And again, that helps to add to that garden spot character. We shared the idea of a roundabout with, with folks and there, there might be a couple places where a roundabout would, would make sense. One, uh, is at Water Avenue because that's at the big pedestrian priority east-west connector. And the other one that might make sense is up here at County Road twelve, uh, really, uh, don't, don't know yet if that, if that wouldn't, would make as much sense. But you know, there's a potential gateway on this end of town, so that could be the home of a, a, another sculptural element like is happening out at I twenty-five. So the, the biggest consideration is this, the, the amount of ground this takes compared to a traditional intersection is much greater and has a greater impact to the surrounding, uh, property owners. So that's, that's something we talked with, uh, homeowners about as well, but, uh, and they also had questions about how bicyclists use these roundabouts. And you, we've, so we've tried to illustrate that where in this case, bikes can easily leave, these are called slip ramps. Uh, they can leave the, the bike lane, join the, the sidewalk and, and use the roundabout like a pedestrian would. Uh, so that's for kinda more recreational riders, uh, more accomplished riders could, could share the roundabout lanes with, uh, with the cars and make their way through, uh, that's, that's pretty common as well, so. And the, and the reason the, that it takes so much ground area around about like this, especially in this corridor, is because there's a lot of truck traffic here. So we've, the, the center radius of that, uh, island is quite large, which then pushes the outer edges further out, so that's, uh, but, but it does kinda add some nice, you know, character in that island as well. So just a few things to think about as, as you consider these options. And now, uh, turning to Bunyan, so this is, uh, the section of Bunyan between, uh, First and the railroad tracks. So looking west towards the, the mountains in the distance here. Again, trying to incorporate that multimodal kind of use, so we've got, we're showing detached sidewalks. And in this case, because it is one of those more pedestrian corridors, ten-foot wide sidewalks on both sides, detached with an eight-foot tree lawn on both sides, uh, parallel on-street parking, bike lanes in both directions and, uh, and two travel lanes. And so, and then also some landscape setbacks again, and these would be those higher architectural, uh, standards that apply to buildings, either new or redeveloped sites, uh, along these corridors. Uh, this is looking the opposite to, so if Bunyan were to be extended east of First, uh, this would be looking, this would be kinda flying just above the ground east of First, looking to the east towards Bacon Lake. And last time we were here, uh, there was a comment, last time or the time before, about trying to create some visual connections to the lakes, to Sunny Slope and Bacon. And those two streets, you know, County Road ten E and, and Water are directly aligned with both lakes. And so by just extending these two corridors, uh, we can create a great pedestrian, uh, connection over to those as well as, uh, connections to the develop, you know, future developments in those areas. So, uh, and then this, uh, just as leading into the next slide, we talked about the fact that a linear park might be a good way to transition between the innovation district and the future residential e, uses east of the innovation district. And so you can start to see that linear park poking out on both sides of Bunyan here and then that future urban, uh, future residential east of that. And here's a, a kind of a bird's eye, so if you were now flying above Bunyan Avenue, looking to the north where this little green arrow is, that's where this view is taken from, but this linear park, the way it's conceived, extends from County Road twelve on the north down to Peak View Meadows on the south and they have little green spaces that could connect into this as well, uh, in that existing development. It'd be a hundred and twenty feet wide, would have the, uh, innovation district uses on the west side of it and then the urban residential uses on the east side of it. The uses, you know, who knows, it could be, over the, the length of this, it could be quite a lot of different things, right? There could be used, uh, space for more active uses, more passive uses. It could also serve as a, a dual function of a, kind of a stormwater, uh, retention and water treatment kind of a facility along its length so that the, the adjacent developers could get some use out, out of it as well. Uh, so there, uh, that's a, a pretty big idea and pretty exciting way to, to connect the, make this north-south connection. Uh, the Jackson parcel, uh, is, that's the name of the owner of the parcel, so just for orientation purposes, north is up, First Street is on the right here. This is Water Avenue, so Northern Water is right up here, that little farmhouse that was showing in some of those illustrations is here and the, the roundabout that we were kinda looking at is here, proposed roundabout, I should say, or tr, signalized intersection. And then Bunyan is here and the railroad tracks are on the west side of this. So as we've talked to, to, uh, community members tonight, all of these ideas are about things that should happen when and if these sites ever develop, right? So we're trying to conceive of ways to make this a, a net positive impact to the streets and to the town, i, if and when this parcel develops. So what are those important things? And in our minds, the important things are those edges, the edges of Water Avenue, the edges of First, the edges of Bunyan, having that green edge, walkable edge, bikeable edge and a nice, uh, setback to these industrial uses, uh, on the property. And, and then on top, the next layer is the architecture and, uh, the, the perimeter, these are the existing buildings on the south end that if they were to, so this Derby, uh, on this corner and all of the other existing industrial buildings. If these were to redevelop, uh, or change use, uh, it'd be nice if they could, uh, be required to bring them up to the high visibility state, architectural standards, just like the rest of these light purple buildings, uh, which would be about one or two stories in scale along the edges. And then the lesser, the lower visibility buildings would be internal to the site, would have a lower architectural standard that's required. There's larger parcels back behind Second Street, which kind of has already been platted in, in this alignment. And, but, so it gives a lot more flexibility on the size of buildings to the west of that. But those could be up to three stories and I thought we had is since there will be a, again, a, a need for detention in, on this property, could we pair that with, you know, another kind of public use, like a gathering space, an outdoor amphitheater, something like that for small performances? And so what we've done is we've wrapped those buildings around between that space and the railroad tracks to try and help with that, that relationship. Uh, we've terraced in the side of that potential detention pond and showing kind of a little raised covered stage here. And then the, the uses around this could be things that are very, you know, maker spaces, uh, could be a brewery, those kinds of things that could kinda complement that type of a use. And then we're also showing a nursery over here to try and kind of tie in again with that town, uh, garden spot type of, uh, character. So I'm just, just, I'm pie in the sky, but you know, what, what are the kinds of things that could make this place special and kind of, uh, contribute to the town's character? And so there, those are the, uh, highlights there. And so I have one other project to present and it's one you've seen before too, but it's the third street. We could either stop there and talk about First Street or I could just hit Third Street and then we could talk about them both.
Let's do that.
Okay, all right. So, uh, you've seen this, uh, before and it's exciting, we, uh, just last week finished up thirty percent construction documents on the, on the project. Uh, we have right now the drawings out being reviewed by a third party, uh, that, which is what, uh, the railroad requires, uh, when you're building on their property as a, as a first step and all, most of this area is, especially on Third Street, is railroad property. So that's happening now, we'll get some feedback probably in the coming weeks about that. We've done some cost estimating, uh, and we know that the, uh, the budget is, uh, it's more than we'd hoped. Uh, but we're, it's less than seven million dollars, uh, but it's nearing seven million dollars for everything that's shown on Third Street, Massachusetts, the two alleyways, the, the First Street, uh, extend, uh, improvements between Turner and Massachusetts and the gravel parking kind of behind, uh, the, the Lejoy elevator and the other historic buildings back there. Uh, so what worth, I think you, as part of your budgeting cycle, you'll be looking at, at a number for this, uh, four and a half million or so, something like that, I think. And so we're going to have to kind of break this down and see what we can afford in that first phase. And based on your comments last time, you mentioned that this block a third is the, is the priority. And so we'll, we'll start by breaking that out separately and then kind of working with town staff to figure out if, if any more of those pieces and parts can be built at the same time. We also met with property owners, uh, recently and they, they really liked the idea of the wider sidewalks, the, the reverse diagonal parking that we're talking about on this west side, uh, you know, kinda met mixed enthusiasm. The paral, converting from diagonal to parallel parking on the east side, not very excited about that idea, but, uh, I mean, the, the property owners. But we tried to explain the reasoning for it and the fact that there's parking available, uh, south of Mountain on Third and, their biggest concerns were all the deliveries and kinds of trucks with trailers and things like that that come for ACE, uh, in, uh, in this, in this area. So that's, uh, just so you know what, what we were, uh, told. And we've also shown things like in this lower, uh, left-hand image and again, it's pretty small here, but that's the, that's the depot. And we tried to, we found some historic images of the depot when it actually had a gabled roof like this, not the hip roof, hip style roof that it has now. And we think it'd be, you know, as a historic landmark, I think there's all kinds of grants available out there and not, it's not, that renovation is not part of this project budget that we're talking about right now, but we just thought it'd be nice to show while we're illustrating this, what it could become. And, uh, so anyway, we're, I think we're at the point now where we could really pursue some grants, even on top of, with the thirty percent plans that really gives the town some ability to go pursue some of these revitalization grants that are available to, to supplement the budget that, uh, the town, uh, has in place. So with that, I'll stop, I hope that was not more than fifteen minutes, but, uh, we've got a whole team here of folks that can help answer, answer questions, uh, too, related to different aspects of the First Street project and, uh, so I'll stop there.
Thank you very much, I trust these questions, comments? I got some.
Yeah.
On Second Street, I really liked the, yeah, thank you, this is all, overall, very, very good. Just my thoughts with the, you had the, looking west on that one view, this is the First Street presentation, you had the bike lanes.
Mm-hmm, this, that one.
Yes, that one. Was, was there any thought about flipping the diagonal, the parallel parking with the bike lane? So the cars would actually act as a protected bike lane, do you see what I'm saying?
We had never drawn it that way, but it's something that we could explore if the town.
Trust yours might know if that actually works or not, cause it works for Collins.
Yeah, um, it, it kinda depends on what the bike lanes are connecting to. And as you guys are kind of moving, uh, over towards the reservoir to the east and then through town on Bunyan, um, some of the reports that, uh, up in Fort Collins, they sort of went block by block and did a lot of pilot projects. And one of the feedback was, they didn't like it at first, but those separated bike lanes where you would park, uh, off the road and then the bike lane would kinda skirt over behind the, the parked cars added a, uh, at least the understanding of safety for everyone who is, who is biking.
Yeah, there are pros and cons, um, I think certainly a consideration on this corridor for Bunyan specifically is the location for the elementary school connections to the rec center, I mean, the, the destinations that you all are familiar with. So I think it's just a level of, from, from a space perspective, you could accommodate either. Um, I think it would be strategic then to minimize the number of access points to Bunyan if you want that facility. I think that's one of the really key design considerations for a bike lane like that, from a visibility perspective. Um, and the number of crossings, you have, of, uh, access points you have to cross as a user becomes tricky.
Could you go into a little depth on that? In my thought, you having the bike lane closer to the tree lawn would make it easier for bike to access versus having to go past the, the parked cars.
I think the concern is.
The opposite side then would be the access point to say like a, a business or to, yep. So I would just say, as you consider that, um, one, yes, this, this kind of concept plan is not prescriptive on whether it's, um, closer to the travel lane or back of curb. I mean, even another design consideration, when you look at Bunyan further, would be whether to elevate that and have it at sidewalk level instead of street level, so that would be another, uh, design consideration that would increase, uh, increase safety. And two, I mean, you could even look at a two-way cycle track on Bunyan if you wanted, which would be putting both of the bike lanes, both directions of the bike lanes on one side of the street or the other. Um, and again, that could be, uh, also elevated at the sidewalk level instead of on street. So at this, at this concept level, thinking about Bunyan as a slower environment, it feels like a buffered bike lane is a suitable treatment, but you could absolutely enhance that further, um, by, by any of those options. it feels like a buffered bike lane is a suitable treatment, but you could absolutely enhance that further, um, by, by any of those options, so.
And Kelly, for clarity, I think I understand what you're saying. When we talk about access points, I think the primary concern is with, when you have the bike lane, on the other side of the cars, between the cars and the curb, that bike is much less visible to the traffic, right? And so for every time you have a turn into a driveway, or every time you have a turn onto an adjacent side street, now you have all these potential points of conflict for the bike, who's motoring through twenty miles an hour and racing down the street, and a car who has a hard time seeing that bicycle. And so, you know, on long unimpeded stretches of roadway where there's very few of those access points, it's a lot easier to accommodate than, than on something like this, where you have a lot of driveways, you have a lot of, you know, you'll have a, a street to turn on every, you know.
I can see that. We'd have to get rid of the parking around those corners, which would hurt.
That's right, you have to push the cars back away from those corners so the bicycles become more visible.
Yeah, and, and I like the cycle track idea, I know there's money involved with that. Any, you know, it just seems that we're not getting the amount of bikers despite putting lanes out.
Sure.
It just seems like a national trend, unless you're in a big city.
I check, you'll be surprised, once the network is solid enough, and only because we experienced this in the community I came from, we spent a lot of money on bike lanes on-street, and we had a lot of cyclists.
And they weren't separated at all with?
No, they were exactly like this.
Oh, because I thought you told me one time that you tried to put ballards up to separate them.
No.
All right.
No, um, that, you know, it, it, I think the other benefit of this cross-section is that there's two ten-foot wide, they're, they're identified as ten-foot walks.
Yep.
Ten feet is the size of our standard trail.
Okay.
Yep.
And so someone who's not comfortable riding in the street.
Or sending your kid, they could go on the sidewalk.
Yeah, or a child who you don't want riding in the street actually can ride on the ten-foot wide walk, and there's plenty of space.
Okay.
And so, you know, what you can't do, what you can't do is get on the sidewalk and go thirty mile, you know, well, not even go thirty miles. Most people can't ride thirty miles an hour anyway, unless you're on a e-bike.
I see Winston in the back, he can.
But, uh, you know, that, that's not the ideal situation for a, a ten-foot wide trail, but for the user who is not comfortable in the road, or for a child who you don't want in the road, they have that option adjacent to the roadway and, and a separated ten-foot wide trail.
Okay.
So I think that kind of helps cover both.
Yeah.
And then the cyclist that is comfortable riding in the road, having, you know, we've talked about this before, I used to ride like a hundred, a hundred miles a week, whatever, on the road. And once you get comfortable, some of those cyclists don't want to be on the sidewalk, because they do want to go as fast as they can, and it's easier to do when you're adjacent to traffic. And on a low-speed road like this, it feels pretty safe, so you just motor through and, so this gives you actually both options, which is kind of nice.
Okay.
And I, I think on that note too as well, the, the parallel parking helps with the visibility much more than the diagonal parking. So pull-in diagonal parking is basically a death trap.
Yeah.
Um, so having it parallel, when you're in that driver's seat, you, you know, if you're doing what you're supposed to be doing, you're, you're checking your, 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 uh, side mirrors before you pull out, it's those, um, it's that pull-in diagonal, where most of the ones, the separated bike lanes, that's what they're going around. It's so that you're not riding behind those vehicles that are backing out in the street.
Yeah, that makes sense, okay.
Exactly. So yeah, so I mean, I think further detail could be put into evaluating, um, exactly what you're saying, whether it's on-street buffered, whether it's the detached, um, cycle track, or if it's on-street but, but behind the, the parking. So I think there are options there, I think at this concept level, the benefit is that the space for any of those, um, is, is built into this, um, especially with the buffer in place that gives you an extra four feet, the, the, the way we're looking at it here, so.
There was a cycle track planned for First when we did the bike lane, that was the final thing?
Yeah, the original, um, which plan, we've done so many plans, I'm sorry, that was the original.
So this is when we finally approved the bike lane, this was here.
That was the, that was the original bike lane master plan. Uh, we did, we did suggest a cycle track on First Street. I think that was in its current condition, and so when we talk about, um, a really, a really completely different vision for First Street, I think than what we had at the time when we adopted that first, uh, bicycle lanes master plan back in, maybe that was late twenty eighteen or early twenty nineteen, then I think it warrants looking at a different concept for, for the entire corridor. But if the board likes the idea of a cycle track along First Street, I think we have the room, similar to this situation, within that right-of-way to kind of play with what does make the most sense.
One of the things, sorry to interrupt, but one of the things I was looking at with, with the, um, the green belt going north to south, that would be actually probably a more, um, uh, uh,
Oh, like in DC, yeah. They, they do that in Pennsylvania, I have any DC, that's great.
And then we, you're not riding your bike next to the trucks that are kind of going up and down north, it's just one block over.
And that's the intent for retaining a bike lane on First Street is to still provide a facility, you know, a dedicated and a, a slightly buffered facility. But I would expect the users of that facility would be rather advanced. So it's giving what would be a, a pretty advanced cyclist today who's just taking the lane, uh, maybe against a little comfort, but just doing it because it's the most direct route, still giving them a facility that is the most direct. But also with the parallel park now, um, you know, i- if you're a recreational rider, or if you have a, a seat on the back, or you know, a child with you, it's not, I don't think, too far away to assume that to go a couple walks out of direction to a much safer, um, and detached, uh, facility would, would be comfortable. So I think our, our hope in, in the, using the, the parallel kind of parkway, linear park, is that by combined, there's facilities then for all types of users.
Could you go back to that slide, I'm kind of confused now. I, I, when I went to cater for that Walkability, uh, Action Institute, they had a cycle track connected to their school, and they were just raving about how it brought up the level of bikers. So that's why it really kind of keyed into the cycle tracks.
You're going the other way. Um, while she's pulling that up, you know, I think, um, one of the things that's, I think, bicycle planners, Kelly can disagree with me, but, um, anyway, uh, there, there are kind of different categories of bicyclists. You know, you have the, you have the people who are going to ride anywhere and they're not afraid to ride. It's a tiny percentage of the population, it's like one percent of people, right? And they're going to get on a road that's sixty-five miles an hour with a two-foot shoulder and ride anyway, they don't care, right? There's a lot of those folks around, especially if you go out in West Berth, and it's terrifying as a driver and as a cyclist, but there's a lot of people that do it. Then you have this kind of enthused and confident crowd, that's like ten percent of people. They'll gladly ride on the, uh, on a, on-street bike lane and not think twice about it. That, uh, they're not going to get on, on a road with no bike facilities, but they're confident enough riding in the road that they'll, they'll get on and go where they want to go. The vast majority of people that get on a bike fall into that interested but concerned category, like, I'll do it.
Even go on the terminology correct.
Well, I'm cheating, I'm looking at my old bike master plan. Because I couldn't remember the exact names, but, uh, that interested and concerned category is the vast majority of people, is, you know, fifty, sixty percent. They might ride on a bike lane as they get more comfortable, most of them are going to look for a trail, uh, that they can ride in an off-street bike facility. And so you got to have options for everyone, I think. Um, and this long, parallel, linear park, and that trail gives you that complete off-street through a much more attractive location, the entire length of First Street, once it's all finished and developed,
Yep.
one block off of First Street, right?
Wait, okay, I'm confused now, so this is not First Street we're looking at?
No.
This is the linear park looking north from Bunyan. Uh, so you can see that facility that we first had up on Bunyan, that, that buffered bike lane there. Um, and then this would be a linear park, um, paralleling First Street.
Kind of one block to the east.
A block east, yep.
The park, so the block, the buildings you see in the upper left-hand corner are between First and this new street that would be East of First, parallel to First.
Okay, thanks.
And then the linear park is next to that.
And Kelly, will you go back to the cross-section for First Street itself?
One thing that might be helpful is to have a, a bike audit, like I know, uh, Ms. Dowker, in, in, uh, Trustee Sorelli did the walk audit that we put on, and I think it would be good to have bikers actually do this versus we think that do this. But asking twenty of them from around northern Colorado, how would you use the town of Berth? It really helps with the walk, with our walkability, so maybe doing that with a bike.
And I think, um, you know, here on this First Street, if you look at the cross-section at the top, there's an eight-foot walk on both sides of First Street also, and that's, that's our kind of local trail standard in our trails master plan, it's not a regional trail. We could talk about expanding that to a ten-foot walk on First Street also, so that you have this, you have off-street, ten-foot wide, bikeable walks, kind of multi-use paths paralleling First Street. You have a much more kind of recreational, much more safe-feeling linear park trail, and then you have on-street bike infrastructure. And really, in that scenario, you hit.
It is like a cycle track.
And you hit everybody.
Yep.
Yeah, and Tru-, uh, Trustee Hardy has brought up, you know, going to Turner, he lives by Turner Middle School, how the amount of parents, more parents are driving their kids out of their perception of safety.
Sure.
Versus when he grew up, or when, when I grew up, and I've kind of noticed the same thing. So anything to get the parents less concerned, even if it sounds a little over the top, would be helpful, so there really is no excuse.
Yeah, and with this typical section, I mean, they're, they're typical for a reason, because it's not going to look exactly like this in every location, um, along the corridor, given right-of-way constraints and different things. But one thought that wouldn't, um, change that the amount of space needed is, instead of two eight-foot sidewalks, you'll get a six-foot on one side and maybe the ten-foot, and reallocating that space to really create that side path. Um, and then looking into, you notice that more suited on the west side of First Street, on the east side of First Street. Two other just notable considerations that we as a project team have been thinking about is, you know, there's still some discussion at a regional level of what a regional trail along the railroad could look like. So not precluding that. Um, and then also some discussion about what role Fourth Street could have in completing some of the bicycle infrastructure. So recognizing now means a pretty wide, you know, it's a wide street, lower volume, but with that connection up then even to ten E eventually, and that, that could also be a, a pretty safe, lower-stress facility, parallel facility to then First Street, to accommodate then some of those key connections that someone may not be comfortable making in a buffered bike lane.
And that would tie right into the downtown project too.
Yep.
Uh, my other, I'll go brief, the other ones were, we just had the grass conversation, and we might have to throw them down the turf on the, on the pictures. It looks good, it's green, but I don't know if we're going to.
Again, turf is not, uh, turf is not prohibited in the landscape guidelines, uh, so.
Then everyone's going to, okay, we'll talk later. Everyone's going to do it then, because it does look beautiful, okay. The other one was, I love the color idea with the trees. I'm not a fan of the clustering, but I, I see the point if we can show more flowers and stuff, so, um, I think that's, I like that idea. And then on the Second Street picture, uh, of the Jackson property, um, there's no plan for a rail stop there either. It looked like from the pictures, is there?
There's not.
Do you, I don't know, how the board feel?
We did talk about that early on as a possibility, and I, I think the more we talked about it as a team and with staff, this isn't kind of the center of gravity for transit, uh, it seems like that would want to be closer to downtown, uh, in our minds. I mean, we, we actually had a concept early on where we'd shown a possible, possibility for that here. And if this became the, the ideal spot for it, it could work here. I mean, it, uh, there's plenty of space to make something like that happen, and you, you know, maybe like a park-and-ride kind of a facility, something like that.
And I see the disadvantages, I mean, I've kind of thought about it, and there's a walk from downtown, but maybe with a good bike system. The problem with downtown, um, is, so I'm going to this two-day rail retreat, Thursday and Friday, I'm on, on the, I'm a director on their, this new board. It sounds like on the, the peak hours, there'll be as much as five cars. So anytime they park, they're going to block Mountain Avenue if we have it closer to downtown. So Jackson might be better if they have to stop, that we're not blocking Main Street.
Okay.
But I love the Jackson idea and having these smaller units versus one big office space, so, because I've heard that existing buildings on Second Street, some of them want to expand, there's nowhere to expand in, in Berth for them. So if they can go a level up, you know, a slightly billiard building, it would help out.
With that rail stuff, how much space would we need? Because all the land on the west side of this picture has all been bought out by the homeowners on, it's a third, right? But what, what about all the railroad property that's south of Bunyan that's on the east side? Is that too narrow or stripped to build a rail station? Is that not big enough?
Um, it, it probably, it probably would accommodate the rail, but I don't know if it would accommodate a station. I don't know, it's something we could, you know, I think in working with rail, this new rail board and, um,
Because that's also railroad bike, right? I mean, there's some buildings up there.
It's all railroad right-of-way.
So I think, um, and there was, yeah, this was the original plan for the location for a rail, uh, depot. Birthday was supposed to get this kind of big program where all the northern Colorado rail traffic would get fixed here, and that kind of went out on the wayside, secretive, I think MEAT got it, I'm not sure, but, um, yeah, so we were fighting to stay on the map, and we are now, and I think there would be good to have a plan to show, we're still planning on this, not that we're kind of giving up and pushing it to another direction, not saying we are giving up, but it would help to have that in there. And, uh, I was going to say something else, oh, yeah, uh, feeling off of what Administrator Kirk said, um, part of the rail district, there are professionals that are going, or it costs money, but they'll look at a particular train stop and kind of design it out for you, so we could hire someone to kind of feed into this.
Actually, I really like Trustee Hardy's suggestion, I've never thought about that stretch of railroad right-of-way adjacent to Third Street, but it's long and it's unimpeded. And you know, you need a long enough space where the train can pull off the main line and, you know, park, it can get on. It'd be interesting to study that spot too.
Do you mean the green space?
Yeah, I don't know what you're talking about either.
What you're talking about right here?
Just south of Bunyan.
North, north of the elevator.
And north of the elevator.
But south of Bunyan.
Correct.
But I thought we already, I, that was, but I thought we precluded that with the downtown. That would be better if we can do it there.
There's actually already a, a spur on that.
Yeah, yeah, on that part. Oh, great, never mind, that's better. Closer we get to downtown, it's better.
Like I said, I know that the rail would fit there because there's already a spur, it's just whether or not that would, whether or not you'd be able to accommodate.
And not block Main Street.
Station and parking, and I, that would be tough to do.
Okay. Go, that was it, thank you.
Might be worth looking at though.
Other questions or comments from trustees, sorry, I hogged.
Time hogged.
Otherwise, I'll open it up. Cool, let's open it up. If you can come to the front again, it's a speaker issue, I'd love to have you guys sit, but.
So on First, you go sidewalk, trees, um, road, bike path, trees, road, bike path, trees, sidewalk.
Boom.
Is there enough room for that? Well, I mean, that is a big space.
Yeah, I'll, I'll piggyback on what, Kelly, and by the way, this is Kelly Ledbetter from, uh,
Good to see you all.
Good to see you again, see you in person. Did you bring any Voodoo Donuts this time?
I know, right? I was saying, I was like, this is the first time in three hundred years.
The typical process is like.
Maybe shake when I eat it.
Seriously?
Bacon on a donut, and I ate it like four hours later?
Oh, that was a personal problem.
Oh, you are looking south, the southern part of First Street right here.
Come on, go brush.
There's one more where. Sidewalk, trees, bike road, tree.
I mean, that's. Pretty easy.
I think the, I think the short answer to the question is, is there enough room there today? No. Um, there are stretches along the road where there's no development on either side, and as those develop, we would expect them to build that full cross-section, right? There are areas where there's already development where it would preclude going that wide. And so it's like Kelly said, this might be a typical section, but it may not be able to be extended all the way down the corridor because of existing developments already too close to the road. And there, we'd have to make adjustments, the road narrows, those facilities narrow, um, but.
Kind of like when you drive up Shields in Fort Collins, and you can tell where they used to have big cottonwood trees, but they don't exist anymore because they finally died and got cut down. And it's like, why does the street do this weird jog here, why does it split here?
Yep, yep.
Oh. I've always wondered that, I thought they were planning on a bus stop or something, okay.
No, it's because of the big cottonwood trees, no one wanted to cut them down, so they had to build around them. And now that they're gone, it looks really weird.
It does.
Yeah.
That's a great, that's a good example.
And here, you don't have this problem in SoCal, but, um, snow removal, you know, with the, with the cars parked parallel, how do, how do you address that?
In this, or when we were talking earlier about the bike lane?
So here, you got a snowplow, he's going to push all the snow where your parallel cars are, I just wanted to, you put no parking up when it snows, or what do you do?
Yeah, so the way that we handle it in downtown.
How do we handle it downtown, yeah, okay.
The way we handle it downtown, we do not prohibit parking over certain hours.
Okay.
Although some communities do, so it gives you an opportunity to come through and, and clear those out. But we do, we push the snow to the edge, and then we have equipment that comes through, like a loader, and pushes it all and, and either moves it to the corners, or in a big snow, where we truck it out.
I've even seen them like push it all to the middle, and then the loader goes down the middle and scoops it all out.
Yeah, we actually looked at a big, like a giant snow blower that attaches to a, uh, front-end loader, where you, where you windrow it to the center, and then you drive that giant snow blower with a snorkel that you're.
Like a car truck, we're going to the back of a truck.
Downtowns are always interesting to clear snow.
So Bunyan, we do clear pretty as a priority because it's cool, I'm guessing.
Bunyan is one of our priority streets, yeah.
That's a good question.
And trusty ears, earlier to your comment about the, the potential for that two-way cycle track or the bike lane back of curb, um, another challenge is maintenance. So unless you currently plow yours, like have a, a four-wheeler, you know, whatever, to plow your side pass, that is what you would need, or even another vehicle. So it's just a consideration for some of the specialty facilities, is the maintenance, year-round maintenance.
And actually, the trails are really easy to maintain.
I've seen you guys do it.
And, and in fact, I would argue that our trails are actually better maintained than our streets, just because they're easier, right? Like, they don't get, they don't get driven on during the snowstorm, it's easy to push that snow off, it doesn't get packed down by cars driving on it, and and so we can clear our trails with the equipment that we have really quickly, and they, they're usually in better shape than the streets.
Sure, so that, that just would be a consideration, in this case, it would be easier just to directly plow.
Right.
But if it's behind the, the vehicle, it can get challenging kind of quickly, so.
Yeah, in fact, I'd never thought about that, but that would be really difficult to maintain in a snowstorm.
Well, and what's typically difficult is the intersections, because sometimes then the, the leftover from the cross-streets makes it really difficult for then someone on that bike facility, because of just the way it.
To jump over the plants.
And it, right, so it's just, again, pros and cons, maintenance being one of them.
There's residential sprinkled in here, so do you think these cars would be parked there overnight?
They could be. I mean, they could be parked there. There there, there's often cars parked there overnight, even in the commercial industrial areas, so it's not uncommon.
It's not uncommon to fill up parking, one of the on-street parking spaces with the snowplow.
With the snow, yeah.
In a really big storm, too, so sometimes you lose one temporarily on each block or one more.
And most of the times in a in a small storm event, six to eight inches, we push the snow to the corners already anyway, and usually that precludes parking in the last spot at the corner.
Sure. Yep.
In a really big event, we have to truck it out because there's just too much.
Any questions? Comments?
I have a question. By the way, great job. Very exciting to see this. Guess the question I have is, so we have the Mountain Relay Plan. And so these are, I guess this is a vision plan and another type of plan. So where does this set in terms of prominence, like as we, you see developments come across? Either the planning commissioner or the trustees, like, do we need to consider these and, you know, kind of validate the development against them or kind of, or is that set? Maybe this.
You guys. Yeah, I think the simple answer is this would have the same level of prominence as the Mountain Avenue Plan. So the Mountain Avenue Plan was adopted first and then it was adopted as code for that corridor to to make it a requirement of all new development for anything that happened within a hundred and fifty feet of the center line of Mountain Avenue, right? This would apply exactly the same way. So this will then get translated into code language that would require developments along this corridor to meet the, meet the vision in this plan.
I have two that I can think of with everything you guys have presented, which look amazing. The Jackson property, which has been super busy for the past forty years. Sorry. I like the layout of this. It looks great. Will, I I know this is just conceptual, but on design, I know trucks can absolutely cause some of the worst migraines for anybody in here, because one truck at the wrong place trying to load or unload, it's gonna have a heart attack kind of effect on everything else. Is that something that's going to be considered on its design?
Yeah, that's always the challenge about putting together something like this is that it's, there's flaws just because you're not working with an actual business operator when you're doing these kinds of things. So yes, each site plan for each building would be custom designed. I I think what this tries to do is provide guidance to say where buildings should be placed, where parking should be placed, where outdoor storage could be placed, you know, to protect those nice edges. So that those are really the focuses of this plan, but but you're right. I mean, the, I think the the Second Street, the latter Second Street will work well for trucks. The mid-block connection will work well for trucks. I think it's then those internal connections that will have to be designed with each development along the way to make sure that the types of trucks they use at their facility can access it. So it's just a little bit beyond where we are, but.
Got it. So it's just conceptual. As things come in, we'll look at it and massage it so that trucks can come in, load, unload.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, we've heard that a lot, and I think, I think what 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 you'll see in the final plan is, like, we have, we've listed a few key concepts here, but I think what we'll do is make sure that, you know, we'll talk about those kinds of things, too, that are important for the internal development, too. These were really more about the town, town kind of perception of, and community perception of these parcels once they're developed from First and Water and Bunyan. And so I think we could then now focus internally, too, on those kinds of details that are also important from a different perspective.
Okay. I guess the only other thing I had was for the Third Street. Been in talks with some of the folks over at the Lions Club, and I've been told quite clearly, pretty much any kind of water effects or anything going on in front of it, or really just even touching the building, they really don't want to do. So just passing that information.
Yeah, we heard that, too. And 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 so the plaza right now does not show a spray park. We've eliminated that from the the labels for that reason, because we got that input from both them and Chris, the owner of the Lovejoy Tower. They just felt like that there wasn't enough space to 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 do that in that, in that area. So but we we still think it could be a little people's space and have some, you know, whether it's just furniture tables, things like that, or if it's, we've we've shown a few boulders in, here, I'll zoom in. Right now in that space, we've actually shown the the words Berthold, kind of a selfie spot or something like that. And then some boulders. This used to have spray jets and we could even pull some of that out and just make it more of a open, flexible space that could be used for a lot of different things that the boulders might get in the way of.
I think Fort Collins has those little things downtown that shoot that really fine. That'd be great. I think, are they worried more about just a huge park with kids running around?
A little bit.
So any water feature they'd be opposed to?
They don't want, and I kind of get it. You know, I think their concern is like, you know, we don't want people tracking water everywhere, bringing water into the store.
Yeah, so like a play park, no, but maybe that Fort, like some kind of water feature where you're not gonna get wet, but you can look at.
That, those kind of laminar flows or these, like these beautiful streams of water, those are really cool.
Well, you're suggesting more like a water feature, not a water play feature.
Right.
So something that's just attractive, like the big, the the waterfall in Old Town Square that has the geese on it that you can't get in.
That would be cool.
I mean.
I'm seeing this as the simple little goldfish that shoots that little thing out, but whatever. Yeah, no, just a thought.
Or to conserve water, use lasers.
I thought, too, is like, this is a historic corner and the goal is to emphasize history and make it feel traditional, old town, so maybe even an old-fashioned water fountain. Like you'd picture.
Yeah.
Something like that.
Or a current road or a train.
But just try and accenting that history and making it feel like we want to encourage more historical preservation in that corner.
We could also take the green scale from literally a block over to the left. Put it up, pull it up, people can literally stand on it and see, you know, scale, does it work? Does it not work? But I mean, that's definition of history. It now has a place to live. Granted, it's out in the elements, so there's nothing wrong with that.
Oh, the literal scale that's in the bottom of the feet square right now.
The size of a truck.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
That's cool.
They could build in like a little enclosure to keep it protected from the elements and then.
I'm just saying, in terms of keeping things relative, keeping things agreeable and not having Lions Club members getting sprayed in the face with water.
Yeah. And then you can weigh yourself before and after a meal.
Yes. Really scientific stuff.
Well, these comments are really in line with those property owners. They they really want to emphasize the historic piece of this. In fact, a lot of these images, we had more contemporary-looking features, sculptures shown in them, and we that replaced those with those more brick-type gateway elements. In this image, you know, we had more contemporary things to contrast with the the history, to emphasize. Sometimes I think when you contrast the historic elements with something that's more modern, it it emphasizes the historic nature of the things behind it, but they 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 really felt like it'd be nice to play off of the history rather than contrast it. So that, this is a little different than what you saw in the previous.
I don't really like how you finished railroad park with the fencing on one side. It just, that park needs some help. It's just kind of like, throw some grass on there, some trees. Okay.
Yeah, it would, it would be nice to.
Looks really nice there. It looks very welcoming and.
One of my favorite comments during our business owner meeting was something along lines of, you know, why would we invest money in this park? Nobody ever uses it anyway, and it's not that nice. And he was like, well, that, that's kind of the whole point, right?
Yeah, make it useful.
Yeah, it was like, you know, nobody, nobody wants to go over there, and it's like, well, that's why we want to make it nicer and make it more, make it more attractive.
Better than making it another parking lot.
I'm still torn, I have to be honest. Like even seeing it visualized here, the the view of the the grain elevator in the end of that block is condensed. And that's such an iconic part of Berthold is that view of the tower and eventually the the depot, too. And so I I still struggle with the reduction of that parking and I know the park, we're trying to make it work. I totally appreciate that, too. But I'm not, I'm personally just not ready to give up that parking in that view space.
What if you made the trees more ornamental, so you would have more of a view? Is it also, yeah, also the parking that you?
We could do more upright trees that don't spread quite as much. Definitely. Those those are easy, easy things to do and and yeah, we've got a huge mural, mural on that that would be ashamed to block over time and and it is iconic for the town, right?
Put the trees further east, put them on the inside of the sidewalk rather than right on the curb.
We could shift trees. We could change the types of trees. Yeah, yeah. But I heard two comments in your comment that you're uncertain about losing that number of parking spaces, too.
I know we're talking about putting it north of the Green Tower. Are we, are we certain that we're able to use that space for parking?
So that's, that's part of the railroad thirty, third-party review that's happening right now. We'll get that kind of feedback very soon.
Maybe there's a gravel mix where you could use it for events, also parking. Well, yeah, I see, I see that. I see your point, too. I like it as a park, but I also see the parking thing. I'm trying to be really open about the reverse parking. I think it's a great idea. I just think it's gonna be really hard to get people to do.
I don't know.
The one-eighty and back up.
Spending more time down there recently and I keep an eye out every time I walk over to the post office and and I see people coming off of Mountain Avenue and they always burn a U E to park in that street. If they could just whip right in and pull in and then back out and then drive off, I think.
Well, that, that's exactly what they're not supposed to do.
Oh, I know. They're not parking on the east side where we're taking away parking. They're they're burning the U E to park on that west side. So having a, the parking space already angled for them to just pull in.
You think that people will do it?
The only, the only way that would work is if we, is if we made the entire thing one way. We actually had that conversation a little bit, like, you know, I think we've already talked about and understand the value of making that stretch from Massachusetts to Turner one-way, northbound, because it allows us to put a sidewalk next to the buildings behind the elevator. It allows us to add some on-street parking that we can't do in a current configuration because it's so narrow. And we talked about maybe we should just make Third Street one-way the entire stretch from Mountain up to Turner. And that would change the streetscape dramatically, but it would be a major change to, I think, where we're at today.
Because have we done a traffic study to see how much traffic comes in off of Mountain versus coming up from Massachusetts? Because that would be a good indicator, like if ninety percent of your traffic's going north in there anyway, because I see very little traffic, you know, on Massachusetts. It's all coming off a mountain and they burn their U E and then they back out and then they go back up the mountain.
I think, you know, anecdotally, I would agree wholeheartedly with you. I go over there all the time.
So you're saying, Tim, that people do back into the park spots already?
No, they're not backing and they're burning U Es to pull in there.
No, they, you know, because I I do it myself when I go to Ace Harbor every time.
Oh, because they're flipped the other way. Yeah, they're flipped the other way.
Yeah, you drive up and then you you basically do a hundred-and-eighty degree turn to go into the parking spaces. And I think what Trustee Hardy's suggesting is if it was reverse diagonal, you could just pull straight in.
And I think it'll happen.
Except that you, except that you're not supposed to, right?
Except now you'll back out and do your one-eighty when you back out.
Yeah, that, that's the problem.
That's even more dangerous than pulling in.
I think the one-way makes a ton of sense. I think the one-way road, if if it's going to be high-trafficed area, there's gonna be a lot of activity. To have that flow of traffic going one direction is gonna be a much better safety issue than if we have traffic going multiple ways and differing parking on either side. I think the one-way is something we should explore.
And the one-way, too, if they are going one-way north on Third and then have to go west on Massachusetts, they're gonna go south on Third, Fourth to the light and then make their right or left turn. Because right now, anybody trying to make a left turn off of Second after they leave Ace, making a left turn there is almost nearly impossible.
It is hard to turn, you know, when you're heading southbound on Third, it's hard to get back onto the, to the road. And so one-way would eliminate that because it would force you to go to the light at Fourth.
Yeah. So I kind of like that one-way circle, that, or or at least that one-way on Third to force them over to Fourth and use the light to go west.
And then people that head eastbound on Massachusetts would have to go north up to Turner to get back down. Or turn, do a U E.
We can always, always close it, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Try one-way if it doesn't work.
I remember we were talking about this, this is like forever ago. Third Street is, it goes further north and it gets condensed down to one lane. The original concept was that was actually going to be a south one-way only, period. Because they were, you, because we could, otherwise we could barrier everything off and you could still come down.
It was a north one-way.
Park.
North, north one-way only is.
North one-way only, right.
Yeah, this, this kind of, so if you close Third, this, and you, you were coming down Massachusetts, you could still get out and get, you know, if you, going to the north. If it was southbound, you'd kind of be stuck and have to kind of head back.
Oh, drive backwards the whole thing. Okay.
That's why we, it was the logic there.
Yeah. No, that's right. It was northbound one-way only at that point there specifically, yeah.
And that, that is still the plan here, is that we would make that stretch northbound one-way.
But what about from Mountain to Massachusetts? Because like I just said about the parking lot, if they're doing the one-eighty pulling in, you know they're gonna be doing the one-eighty to pull out if we do the reverse parking.
I think, I think there's a likelihood that that's true.
I know you'll do it. I, I'll do it.
I'll do it, too.
And I will not, I will not pull into the reverse diagonal forward, because I think that is really unsafe.
Example?
But and it's also really unsafe, right? I mean, it's just, but it's like we talked about before with the reverse diagonal. It's unique and different. The benefit is it's much safer for bikes and pedestrians, exactly what Trustee Ayers was talking about earlier, you know. Diagonal parking is dangerous for bikes, because cars have a hard time seeing them. Because they're backing out into the road, right? But it's a reverse diagonal. The idea is that's a much safer condition, especially for bicyclists, but.
But if, if the proposal now is to make Third Street northbound one-way only, we're back to pulling in?
We are. I think.
So I guess.
But there's only.
Unless you put on the other version again.
Yeah, exactly. Then then everybody gets reversed, right? And then you don't have this need to do a U E, right? Because you can just, you can reverse diagonal into any sing, any space along that route, and that's actually pretty functional.
Yeah, I like that.
And we could still make it wide enough that, I, we've heard from some business owners that they do some loading and unloading from the middle of Third Street.
That would actually, that would help with trucks as well, because you don't have to go.
Pickup truck or the trailer pull up, hunk is hard and go, ugh.
And even semis, they've said, occasionally will pull up onto that street and kind of.
Park in the middle of the road.
Yeah, park in the middle of the road and so. Yeah, that gives us a little bit more wiggle room, maybe to fit all of those things into the. Does everybody feel like that's a reasonable option?
To keep all the parking.
I'm open-minded, and I think the worst thing is it's just paint, right? We could, if it always just goes south and.
Yeah, that's right.
It really will be a problem with the elderly backing up. I don't think that's hard to imagine, that someone cranking their head a hundred-and-eighty degrees to see behind him is hard.
I think it's just the tradition of everybody turns wide to go to Ace.
Not to get too into the weeds with.
What's that? Yeah, true. All right, good point.
Well, if we're, if we're doing one-way traffic, though, you have a much wider area to have specified bike lane and areas for pedestrian flow, so you could have normal parking, normal diagonal.
It changes the whole nature of it.
Because there's no reason the bicyclists are going to be behind that, those parking spaces, if there's designated lanes on maybe that east side where those parking spaces are. I think, yeah, one lane, I mean, just safety-wise, I just see so many less opportunities for collision with bikes, pedestrians and traffic.
The traffic study would definitely be proof in the pudding, though, here to see how much traffic is actually going to Massachusetts.
I I can say without a traffic study that the vast majority of traffic is coming off of Mountain.
Off of Mountain and going back to Mountain. It's a back and forth.
Yeah, just, just because, I mean, you think about the amount of traffic that's on Mountain compared to the amount of traffic on Massachusetts, which is almost nothing right now. There's just no way, I mean, the vast majority of traffic.
Pull my doorbell cam, I can count the cars for you real quick.
It could be looked at as kind of a positive for the Massachusetts block, because it'll activate that street, especially with the redevelopment that's happening. It could really be a win for that, that block.
Is the, sorry, that intersection on Massachusetts and Fourth. I know we were talking about on Mountain, kind of where the vet hospital is, Loggaville, Licker. Those corner pieces are kind of more outset and it definitely makes that turn a little bit more snug than it needs to be. I guess, I remember bringing this up, my concern was, is that design gonna do the same thing elsewhere? And now that we're intentionally funneling people through it, is that gonna make things worse or better?
So what I can say is we've modeled this, the turning for semi-trucks, because we know that semis need to use all of these intersections. And so we're, we're intention, and we're even, sometimes those models model the best-case scenario, so we're even giving that a little extra breathing room around those those, those models. The other thing we're doing is we're not putting any planting areas or pots right at those corners, so they they can act like a little apron for back wheels occasionally when they, when they, and you can see that on corners of Mountain and Fifth. Right now, where that happens a lot.
Where they're hammered.
Yeah.
Tire tracks running over the corners.
And they're actually broken around.
Around about. Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Right?
So we're holding things back from that corner for that reason. So it's really mostly paved at the corner and then the, any amenities are pulled off of that.
And then they'd be reinforced and things in a different way than maybe just a standard curb that would get trashed by.
We actually have, so, and we could even, we could even pull these pots, you know, back, back here, but so it's this portion of the corner that can kind of get run over and we could even change how the, the ramps are graded and those kinds of things, but yes, those bumpouts are intended to narrow that pedestrian crossing, make it a little safer. and we could even change how the, the ramps are graded and those kinds of things, but yes, those bump outs are intended to narrow that pedestrian crossing, make it a little safer crossing. But also, you know, we, we know that those kinds of automobile patterns happen at these places and they need to be able to withstand it.
You know, modeling it with engineers have an easy ability to model those turning radiuses with semi-trucks and make sure that they work. My suspicion is that didn't happen at Fifth Street.
No.
Cause it's, it's hard to make that turn and have to pick up.
No.
Fifth Street's crazy, man.
Fifth Street is really tight, really tight.
Awesome, anything else from trustees?
One question is back to the, this parking thing, I related bringing this, but um you know, I'm just concerned about, I guess, the amount of parking, because we're trying to revitalize this downtown and encourage more, you know, uh just commercial, business, you know, sales, sales tax revenue and so forth, and I am torn or, you know, um we take away parking, but we're trying to, you know, encourage more traffic and access and, you know, revitalize it, so that's.
So I think what, what we just talked about, correct me if I'm, what I heard, uh the direction might, if we explore making Third Street northbound, that we would put diagonal back on both sides and it would be reverse diagonal on both sides. And maybe even bike lanes uh in front of those, at least, I don't know, maybe one side and maybe the, maybe the west side and the, the bikes can use that pathway that's kind of at the edge of the park on the other side. I don't, I don't know, we, we can play with that, but, but that would get us probably a, a big chunk of the number of parking spaces we lost if we go that route.
And, and again, part of our intent was, and we've talked to the Lovejoy Elevator Owner about improving the parking behind the elevator and adding a whole lot more spots there. So it is a redistribution of parking, it's not, it's not a reduction in parking.
But who wants to park that far away from Ace and carry their tools that far?
Well, and that's a good question, I think we talked about this with the business owner meeting. You know, the distance from the back of the Walmart parking lot to the front door is basically from Massachusetts down to Subway or farther, right? And so people never think twice about carrying their stuff, you know, their couple bags full of stuff out of Walmart all the way back at the parking lot.
Yeah, but you can't see that, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to be.
No, I know.
I'm just thinking, you can't take a grocery cart that far, or you're, I don't know how you're going to, and you can't see it either.
No, I get it, and I think um that is always a problem in downtown. In every downtown in America, if you cannot park in front of the front door, you're pissed. And, and um, I mean, I, I don't know any other way to say it, right? And that's just normal, right, like, and so it has to be thought of in a different way. And now, again, I think if we, if we do what we're talking about now, we're not gonna lose any space on Third Street anyway, uh so that would be ideal.
Yeah, I support that, I think.
To me, downtown environments, to me, are more geared towards pedestrian than to vehicles, in my opinion. Cause like when I go to like Old Town Santa Cruz or even Old Town Los Catos, when I was living in California temporarily, or even Boulder, I don't ever park on Pearl Street, I'm parking a block or two off, and then I plan on walking down Pearl Street or walking down the, you know, the shopping district. And if, you know, I'll drive down it just once, just maybe I'll get lucky, there might be that lucky parking space I had my day and give it the Powerball ticket. But I end up just going down, no, no parking, pull off, park, and then I end up walking down the whole thing.
But it is tough, and I think Ace is the type of business where that doesn't, Ace is not a pedestrian-oriented business, right?
Yeah, the other ones might be.
But he's also, the others might be, Ace is not, and I think we have to be mindful.
He's also got the whole parking lot in the back where he does a lot of loading and unloading too.
That's true.
He's got a loading zone.
They said during the, during our meeting, um they bought that parking lot for loading and unloading for, you know, other reasons, you know, to store it, but.
Storage.
Yeah, they, they said most of their, the time, it's a new trucker who's never delivered to their store before, pulls up in front of their, their, their building. And then they have to kinda direct them back to their back-loading area, so sometimes when they arrive, just to even open the store, there's already a truck there waiting, parked, parked in.
They drive up Massachusetts and then they go up on the Fourth and then they do their little horseshoe turn and the parking lot in the back.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, but I, I agree with you that, I, I, I don't know, I, I think the uh the, the requirement to have to walk in a downtown actually helps all of the businesses, it's a symbiotic kind of a thing that having to, not being able to park in front of your destination, uh that, I think that's why big box stores were created. So you could drive to that store, park at it, go in, get your stuff and walk out. Downtown's, I think if, that's been one of the beauties is, is uh discovering a store that you, maybe you didn't know about and maybe even making a purchase in a store that wouldn't have happened if you had to park, if you were only able to park in front of the store you were going to, so. Uh but I understand both sides of it, it's, it's, this economic development side is, is uh important to consider as well and, and I think there's physical space to do everything we just talked about today, uh and, and I think it's worth, uh, I don't know, maybe we floated this idea that the property owners too in another, in another meeting, the, the one-way idea.
And I think we actually even mentioned one-way and there were, there was some general support for that concept, especially if it, if it didn't require the elimination, ten parking spaces or whatever. You could never have too much parking in downtown, right? I mean, that's just, that's the reality of every downtown.
Consider the parking size too, like we're having a little budding low-speed vehicle golf cart movement here, and I think it'd be great to encourage you. Then we don't have a parking issue, we have a vehicle size issue, so if we even had three spots or something, uh that'd be helpful.
Motorcycle parking.
Motorcycle, yeah.
We're really gonna encourage it.
We got the birth of buggies group.
What we said.
They're forming.
Reveling the parking in half the space.
Drive slow, nevermind.
I know, they're polarizing, but I think, we're on an environmental movement.
If you have something to say about that.
Yeah, we've, we've got a pickleball movement and we're gonna have the buggies movement, they're the next ones coming up.
You say pickleball three times, they show up at your meeting?
Oh, don't.
Justy Butler?
It's two.
I got one, one, final question back to the First Street quarter, uh the linear park, I'm assuming, is that intended to be town-owned?
Uh, it could be, it could be a combination of, so I think it could be dedicated to the town, I think that's something we'll have to figure out and decide as we move forward.
The linear park.
Uh or it may be um built and maintained by the subdivision that's adjacent to it, um in all cases, it would be public, um.
I was wondering just, just if that was a public right-of-way, town-owned.
But. It would be required to be a public.
That's a lot of land.
It, it'd be required to be public, but who maintained it might be a different discussion. Um because, you know, like in, in all of our subdivisions, we require park development. Here, we're telling them where they'd have to put it, right?
That's true, okay.
And so, um if, if you look at it that way, we're not adding this in as an addition to our park development requirements, we're saying, we're gonna require you to build a park as part of your subdivision, we do that already anyway. We're just telling you where you have to put it.
Right, I like that.
And so they may choose, they may want to maintain it, it depends, you know, as those, as those areas get developed, they may not want to. If it's a smaller parcel where there's maybe not enough, you know, HOA or tax base to maintain that, we would take that on. Or we might just choose to accept and take the entire thing, which is probably the most likely scenario, I just don't know if we've got to that level of detail yet.
Right, okay. So I was thinking as it develops out, you know, you're gonna have sections that get developed, you know, disconnected, and what that would look like with, we're talking about accessibility and, you know, bicycle traffic and so forth.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, it's, it is always like the, the stare to nowhere kind of a, an idea, but it's eventually it could.
I love it, nonsense.
This really wonderful vision could be achieved if, if we, but it, you're right, it has to start somewhere and, and then they'll see the, the, the potential, you know, that it, it holds after that first phase.
Okay, well, thank you, I love everything as a whole.
Trusty Ayers?
Yeah, that was one of my comments too, to, to follow up on that, is that if, if something like that linear park were to get developed that is more focused towards recreation, either pedestrian or, or cycling, um I think it's important to connect the same style of infrastructure east-west as well. So that it doesn't just, so that you're not, so i- if, if families are worried about being on a road, so that they don't have to drive from their neighborhood, get on the road and then go to this, you know, three hundred yard long wonderful park and then get back on the road to get back to wherever they're going. So I, I think north-south is, is wonderful because the space is there, but, but uh especially with Bunyan, those, those connections to sort of make that infrastructure to look like one piece, I think is, is an important future step.
Yeah.
And to piggyback on that, cause I was gonna, I was waiting, is we've been talking about First Street, we talked about Third and Massachusetts. But we kinda missed that little gap of connection between First and Massachusetts and Third. Took the railroad park, I mean, can we maybe blend these two together and include all the railroad property of the Bunyan to see how that would all kinda mesh together?
That'd be interesting to look at, see.
And kinda have it not be like a high priority zone, but say, hey, we're thinking here, we're thinking here, but there's all this railroad property in between that could help connect these two facilities.
Yeah.
And then that would fly into the railroad station and things like that and our transportation needs.
It's a great idea.
I guess we're looking at.
Because that's kind of a desert right there that, you know, we can make that look nice and connect those two areas, okay?
Yeah, awesome, because it's not, it's not visible and it's not the sort of main part, but it is a necessary connection between those two.
It's, it's a wide-open connection that could be used and it should be, cause the railroad's not gonna do anything with it.
Yeah.
That'd be a great suggestion.
Should be the ones to change that, and I think we need to be the change for that section and make that look nicer and presentable, cause I mean, that was the last dirt road in Berthet up until what, nineteen eighties eight or ninety or something like that, nineteen ninety, cause.
It's a great idea, I like that.
That is a great suggestion.
Is that a cool to word, do we include that suspension?
Okay, fine.
Trusty Ayers, anything? Um yeah, so I, sorry, I had one more question on um, so you had one of the connections, s- so I understand making the two reservoir roads um the more pedestrian-friendly slower speed and, and Water Avenue being the sort of the more industrial um vehicle connection. But I'm, I'm, I'm concerned as to how to get west. If there's a roundabout there, if there's infrastructure there, if that's gonna be the sort of transportation and vehicle corridor, where are they gonna go? I get, it's my, how are they gonna get out of there?
I think the uh, the, maybe I didn't emphasize it enough, but the, even though the Water Avenue may have less uh wide sidewalks, there'll still be on-street bike facilities and they'll still be able to uh uh the, at the roundabout, if, if, if that's the chosen, you know, intersection treatment there, I mean, it could be a traditional roundabout as well, uh like, like shown here. But, but if it was a roundabout, uh you know, the, like we've talked about, the more experienced riders can, from any direction, join with traffic through the roundabout and then hop back in the bike lane or slip off on the slip ramp, slip ramps, join this for the less experienced riders and then you cross through the intersection more like a pedestrian.
Sure.
Is that what, does that answer your question?
No, um, no, um, my, I, and I might not have voiced it correctly, so i- it seems to me that the, the understanding would be that because this is the roundabout, this is the um higher-speed section of roadway. As opposed to uh Bunyan where it is, it's gonna be, you know, either a traffic light or, or some, some, some other sort of entrance into those east-west. It, the, it, the view corridor goes directly to the reservoir, it's more likely going to be recreational in nature. Whereas it seems to me that this, because of the roundabout, is going to be at least assumed to be a corridor, if, if a um, a feeder road or, or more vehicle-centered. If I'm going this direction, entering town, and I take a right, where am I gonna go?
Okay, so if you're going this way and then you, you turn down.
Yeah, that's my, you, you mean as a, on this vehicle or as a?
Vehicle.
So you turn down water, so what you're doing?
Water has.
If I turn down water, how do I get out of there?
Water has a crossing in the railroad.
Yeah, it crosses the railroad.
And it just continues over to Fourth Street.
And then there's a, you can tell the way the development's setting up.
And so Fourth Street is gonna be that, is, is going to be the, the vehicle corridor to come north and south from there.
North or south.
It would be once you cross the railroad tracks, yeah.
Right, right.
And then actually water will continue all the way across the Berthet Parkway.
Yeah, there's a.
But through, through Vantage? Okay, that was, that's, that's my main.
Yeah, it was designed, it was designed that way.
So it is going to be a uh
Big east-west.
A, a big east-west connector.
From Berthet Parkway all the way over to First.
Okay, that was, that was my concern, yeah, yeah.
Sorry, misunderstood, yeah, that's.
Good question.
And we've actually shown that it doesn't connect today, but this, this section between here and here roughly is not there yet, but it will be eventually.
That was my concern because I, I use, um, I go up to ten right now to go out to Berthet Parkway, and I didn't know if that was gonna still be a sort of connector road or if, if water, cause I, I didn't realize that, but.
You're right, yeah, water will be a major east-west connector.
Okay, um so follow-up question, um any word on the interchange with two-eight-seven?
Ah, well, Kelly.
Uh, word being.
Yeah.
There's, they were hoping you were gonna bring that up.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Wait, in this regard, this is two-eight-seven?
Up in First Street?
Oh, First Street, okay.
Yeah, sorry.
Up in First, yeah, so um I'll back up and, what, actually, I, I'll make a comment actually about water, so County Road ten to the east actually has the most eastern connectivity as well. So another kind of reasoning behind putting that vehicular, again, priority, it's not saying that facilities won't be provided for the bicycles and pedestrians, but putting that vehicular priority on water in ten is because there's um quite a bit of eastern connectivity um for that roadway as well as a parallel to State Highway fifty-six, like to Mountain. Um and then related to the interchange, so um certainly if there is a desire to envision the US two-eight-seven and First Street partial interchange as a full movement interchange, that is something that I would recommend we put in this document if there is a desire for that. Um I think the, the topography there makes that challenging, uh with that kind of wide and, and massive berm on the kind of south side there. I, I wouldn't say it would preclude an interchange, I just think it, it makes it challenging. Uh I think there's um anecdotally known patterns of people um accessing two-eight-seven, going northbound and then turning around, like you're making a U-turn on two-eight-seven. But it would, it would require quite a bit of additional coordination with C dot. Um I think for the purposes of this concept study would be really to determine what desired future improvements need to be communicated in this and then work in coordination with C dot to achieve that. I know there's study of two-eight-seven currently happening, um and I'll say there's pros and cons to that becoming a full movement interchange, um notably likely more traffic on First Street. Um it's a discussion that we've had in this, in this plan of, you know, is there a need to reserve even additional right-of-way? Um and I think in the con, the comprehensive plan, uh that was not envisioned nor discussed as a full movement interchange. Um which is what really led to kind of a two-lane arterial being envisioned for First Street. Um but with that transformation there, I do think there would be other considerations for First Street that would need to be.
How much right-of-way is there, cause I always kinda pictured that through First Street, they would kinda make it kinda do a little right and then do left to come head-on into two-eight-seven, still allowing the northbound traffic to flow smoothly on, but it would give them this traffic pattern to come head-on to two-eight-seven that they can then cross and then go west and south. Cause I've seen that in California where they've taken a road and instead of making a left turn lane, they made the road kinda go out and kinda come in like an intersection. And then the left turn lane comes off of a signaled intersection. Not that they had put a signaled intersection there, but it would be like a left turn lane that's just that quarter lane, quarter mile or eighth mile up that they'd burn the UE at anyway.
Burn the UE, yeah, I um, I don't know what the right-of-way situation, situation is there for, for this level of study, we did not um do any survey for the right-of-way. Um so that would, yeah.
So your suggestion is if we wanna look at that, put it in this document? I think we should, I think especially if you're saying Jackson, you know, Jackson will be a ton more industrial. And if the semi-trucks can't get to Longmont easy two-eight-seven, they're gonna use Water Avenue, so increase traffic, but it would be increased freight through residential if we can't get it.
Yeah, absolutely, so I think, yeah, for the, for.
Okay, if we include some kind of.
For Mountain, they'll get, they'll get on. Yeah, we, we talked about that at the very beginning of this process, that, that really what we don't wanna do is preclude the idea of, of a full movement interchange there, that we think that may be a necessity in the future. And so.
So is it okay if we put it in the document?
Cause everything works great, but there's no southbound access.
Yeah, it makes sense.
What I don't, what I don't think we'll do is consider like actual design concepts, I think that's probably a step too far, I think just identifying this as a potential future full movement.
And I think the initial conversation with C dot would say, we have that interest, might not be for ten years, but that way, the two-eight-seven study, that is going this far north, they know, we always can do the sad puppy face that you took away our, you took away our two-eight-seven and moved it as the bypass, so we, we lost access.
Well.
And. My concern is the, the truck traffic, because if they're, if they're having to go down Mountain, that's gonna cause a, a whole lot of extra traffic and congestion problems. Whereas if they go down First Street and then go east to I twenty-five, that's fine, and then instead of having to go south to Mountain to go to two-eight-seven, they can just head up north and get right on the exit right there. Or having to turn down water or Berthet Parkway and then take a left at that light, which is gonna cause a whole bunch of congestion issues as well.
So I think we should, it sounds like, just to include it, even if it's just a square. Wait, anything else? Frank is owning? Lynn? All right, anyone else?
Lynn's is open.
I'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting, thank you so much for you guys sticking around.